All right, hello everybody. I am going to call the Thursday, August 21st meeting, a business meeting of Borough Council to order. Let's proceed with the Fledge of Allegiance. Emily, do you want to leave us in the pledge?
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, one now, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The best man, my fellow.
President Bush.
Here.
Vice President Rickards.
Here.
Councilmember Sammanson.
Here.
Councilmember Winston.
Here.
Councilmember Rock.
Here.
Councilmember Spear.
Here.
Councilmember Badini.
Here.
Mayor Andrew Doig.
Here.
All right, I have some brief comments. First of all, to manage today's public comment, we are asking everybody to sign in, just so we have your name spelled correctly, if you'd like to make a public comment. As a reminder, you know, this is a, we have a discussion item on zoning updates today. We will not be voting on any actual legislation until next year. The process is going to involve us, Planning Commission, which is our main partner in working on zoning legislations, working on its recodification. So, on the recodification of our, of our code, they will be finishing that up in the next few months, and then we will be having them discuss various zoning concepts and bring it back to us for more discussions. So, we're looking at next year for votes on these topics. We will be having a public meeting, it's a large, more informal public meeting, next year, early next year, time to be determined, where it'll be easier for people to get feedback. I think that's it for now. I'll move on to the mayor's report.
Oh, thank you. Just updates, some people may have heard that there was a call of an active shooter at Villanova University that has since been determined to be a destructive hoax. So luckily, everybody is safe, but it was an enormous waste of resources, and it's a crime to call in something like that. So, but thank God, it was a hoax, and everybody is safe. The Borough is having a blood drive on August 29th, and if you are able to and willing to give, to help people in need, it's a very, very necessary thing to have the Red Cross have blood supplies when they need it. So you can go to the Borough, the Borough Facebook page, and they have the details, and there's a code that you can sign up and donate to help your friends and neighbors. Last, we are going back to school in just a couple of weeks. We're back to school, so a reminder to please, you know, watch, there'll be a lot of pedestrians crossing our road, a lot of kids going to school. Please be extra careful as you drive through the Borough, especially during school times, and be extra aware that kids are going back and forth to school. And along those same lines, as I've been saying, the school bus, bus cameras are now active, and when you see the stop signs out, extending, stop, follow the law, or get a ticket. And the ticket is steep, and not worth it, and not worth the .5 seconds that you think you're making up to get where you're going. So it's not worth getting caught, you will get caught, don't do it. So, and that's it.
Yeah, I'd like to think that all the people who blow by the school buses are not Norworth residents.
They are not, they are not. But to those outside the Borough who are cutting through at those times, whatever, you will get caught, don't do it.
All right.
All right.
Thank you. And Borough Manager, you have a report for us.
All right, so a couple exciting things have happened. First, we are just about nearing the end of our new website design, so we are beta testing it right now with staff and with council. So just for the public's awareness, our new website should be live in a couple of weeks. So we're doing our final testing. We're very excited about this new way to get out information, it should be a much easier website to navigate, so we're super excited to have that out in the public. If you're using it and you find any broken links or anything, it's, you know, all still new, so feel free to reach out and let us know. But we're very excited about the new website, and we appreciate all of the work that our council has provided with the input as we go through that process. Also exciting news, you may have seen a couple of contractors out by the bridge with horn hats and orange vests. That means that we are officially underway with our bridge construction project, so let's have a go at that. So we held our pre-construction meeting with our contractor and the utility companies. We are working through right now a draft schedule that is being reviewed by our construction management firm. That information will be shared as soon as we have a final schedule that we can share, and we're looking at scheduling our town hall style meeting with the contractor to go over the bridge. We don't have that finalized yet, but it's going to be either September 22nd, 23rd, or 24th. So mark your calendars, it'll be one of those days in the evening, and we'll be posting that in all of our news channels as soon as we have that date finalized. So that will be an opportunity for residents to come and ask questions, see the schedule, and see what's going on. Just as a quick kind of update on what you're actually going to see, the first step of the process is to move all of the utilities off of the bridge, so the bridge itself is not actually going to be demolished right away. You will not see that happen. What you will see though are going to be crews taking off all of the utility connections and moving those out of the way. So we're going to be seeing some pre-trimming work and some utility work, and that's going to be about the first year or so of the project, is just coordinating all of that, staging everything and getting that set up. So we'll have more information and a firmer schedule for you to follow, and that will all be on the new website as well, it'll have a dedicated page, so you can check it every single day if you would like, to stay up on the latest with the bridge projects. Otherwise, the other big thing that you may have seen around town is our road program, so that was completed. So thanks very much to Mr. Elvin at Public Course Group for coordinating with our construction team for that. That was a successful program, we have two new speed bumps and some nicely paved roads. So those are the highlights from this past month.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. As a reminder, public comment will be limited to three minutes, and certainly if you could keep it shorter than that, it'd be appreciated, there's a lot of folks here. And I'll ask you to step up to the microphone and come right close to the microphone, I'll just go row by row, I'll ask rows to stand up and get in line for the microphone and begin speaking. If you'd like to speak for public comment, we are asking everybody to please sign that form over there so we can get your name right for our public records, okay? And so we will begin with the folks that are in this room, and then we will move to anybody online, but I will note that there are a large number of folks in the room, so it will be a while before we get to our online guests. Okay, so I'm going to begin in the first row, so if you'd like to make a comment in the first row on the side, just stand up and, the rest of you can wait behind the microphone, so let me.
Good evening, everyone, my name's Jerry Lyons, I'm a resident at 27 Hanson Court.
Can you please speak directly into the microphone if you can?
I'm a resident at 27 Hanson Court, I've been there for 30, a Norworth resident for 33 years. I do want to raise an objection, I hope this is the appropriate time, to the ordinance, specifically Section 3, that deals with Hanson Court, I have a copy of it for everybody, so we all have a copy of it. In particular, it's the last sentence of Section 3, which deals with the lighting, the wall, and water inlet. Basically, it's not in Sections 1, it's Sections 2 that deal with Foxhole Lane or Norwood Lane. Why should it be in this paragraph that deals with Hanson Court? Antonella was good enough to send me the email that Tony Walco, that you sent her, and even stated in there, you know, it's not going to affect our street lamp or anything like that. It's therefore irrelevant, it's immaterial, it just shouldn't be in there, and I'm curious as to why it's in there. I mean, who wrote the ordinance with that name?
I wrote.
All right, why do you have it in there?
Let me ask you, do you believe that Hanson Court owns the stormwater facilities?
The what?
Does Hanson Court own the stormwater facilities?
No, it does not, as far as I know.
Does Hanson Court own the wall in the front?
The wall, I believe, yes, because for 33 years I've been paying to have my share of it, my portion of it prepared.
And did you have lights going all the way down, not just at the entryway?
Yes, we do have lights in the whole street.
Who owns those lights?
I don't know, I didn't tell you. But I know Norworth.
Is it in your position that Norworth Borough owns the stormwater facility that services Hanson Court?
What exactly do you mean by the storm?
Isn't there a basin, for example?
That I'm not familiar with. Do, do, does Norwood Lane and?
Perhaps I could authorize the two of you to go have a conversation on silent.
I don't think we need to have a conversation, this ordinance is about roads. This language was specifically put in here to make sure that this was just about roads, to avoid issues that we've had in the past related to both the walls and the light posts where the community has attempted to have Borough say that, hey, you Borough owns, and I don't believe it'd be legal for this Borough to spend money, taxpayer money of the entire Borough, to essentially benefit just a few property owners with, whether it be the stormwater where they're lighting. The public lights in the front, Borough's already agreed and does maintain, and provides a pace for the electricity to go, that's not an issue. This is not, that's not changed by this ordinance. This language was added specifically to make clear, 10 years, 5 years, 20 years from now, no one comes back to the Borough and say, oh, you own the stormwater too, fix our stormwater, so it's you on the rest of these lights, fix those lights, to the detriment of taxpayers. So that's what this language is there for. And it seems that it is proven to have added, that's my opinion.
I beg to differ with you, like you just said, this ordinance has only to do with the roads, and all the text in there should be focused on the roads, not on anything else. I'm sure Norwood Lane has lights, I'm sure Foxhole has lights, there's nothing about it in those sections, Sections 1 and 2. I think you're trying to squeeze something in that shouldn't be there, and that's totally irrelevant to the roads. When I pulled up a month ago, and I spoke to Maggie Dobbs about the purpose of this ordinance, she said it has to do with the roads, the blacktop, getting the money from the state. That's what this ordinance should be limited to. As far as I know, I've never asked Norworth to, to make, to pay for the wall, I don't know if anybody else has, but I haven't, but that's not the issue here.
Sir, your time has expired, I need.
Thank you, I think you got my point.
Right. Anyone else in this first row who should speak? And as a reminder, give us your name and your address.
My name is Luis Avera, I also live in 27 Hanson Court, I want to second everything he said. I also want to state that if you're going to take taxes away from us, I would expect that you're also going to take taxes away from us, because then basically, now, you know, you pay enough taxes and you're taking away from us, so we have to give you some return.
Well, do you believe it's being taken away?
Well, I mean, based on this, I mean, like, taking lights away, taking the.
We're not taking, we're not taking anything away, we're just making sure in the future, you don't put the rest of these taxpayers on the hook to fix your stormwater facility, because it's not Borough's facility, it's Hanson Court's, so that's all we're trying.
But we are not like a, like a, so it's given, right, a private road.
You're right, it is, it is.
I mean, maybe the.
Would you like the Borough?
So we are part of our, or we are part of.
Wouldn't you like the Borough to take your road? Sir, would you like the Borough to take the road?
The point of this ordinance is to actually, just to have it clear, we are taking responsibility for keeping the road paved and your roads plowed, as we have just agreed to do with Foxhole and.
Or, or.
I'm sorry, we're, we're actually taking, if we don't, we could strip you out of this ordinance, and you'd still be responsible for all of this, the roads, et cetera. We're giving you something, we're taking on the responsibility to get your, to get your road paved, which is currently not our responsibility. We're just making clear that that is all we are taking on, and nothing more. And I'll just speak, you know, from my own personal experience, I live on Shirley Circle, which does not qualify, because I asked when I saw this ordinance, I'm like, oh, you guys are now getting your paved road, they just finished paving Shirley Road, and Shirley Circle will not pave, because our road does not meet the state mandated requirements that would allow us to get reimbursed by the state. So, you know, we're providing you a benefit in this statute, we're just limiting what the benefit is, a benefit that I don't get, for the same reason that Mr. Walco just articulated, which is, our road is too small, and the taxpayers, you know, would only benefit my neighbor Martha back there, me, and two other neighbors, so we have to pay for our own full disaster cleaning. So I kind of think your objection is sort of misstating the, what the bigger picture here is, which is, wait, let me finish, which is, we're providing you a benefit, if you object to us providing you this benefit by, by taking on the responsibility of paving the road, that's fine, we don't have to, we can strip you out and not have you get your road paved on our dime. That's what this is designed to do, is to say, we will do this, we recognize that the Borough has been doing it, even though it's not legally mandated, we think it's appropriate to say, we acknowledge that we've been doing it for 20 years, why, you know, you should get that benefit, just like everybody else in the middle of this road paving project, you should be put on the schedule. So, you know, the objection that you're making, that we're not doing it in essence enough for you, just seems misplaced to me.
My favor is construing my.
Good, sir, your, your time has expired.
Well, I think I should have a right to reply to that.
That's not how this works, please have a seat, there is no right to reply, this is not like an adversarial court.
I think Mr. Tasman here has runt the furthest time to me.
That's not.
That doesn't work out.
He is welcome to make his own public.
Well, I, well, I.
Sir, please, sir, please have a seat.
Email, email, I'm happy to continue.
Please, please have a seat, there's a lot of other.
Hold on here.
Sir, sir, please have a seat, there are about 50 other people who wish to.
It's a lawyer's contribution.
Have a seat, sir.
I live in, Mike J Tasman, I live on 18 Hanson Court, I'm one of the two oldest residents of the street, I moved in in the summer of 87, and since that time, we've provided services from Norworth, pretty much without fail. There have been a few questions about the pillars picked here, the pillars, which have two torches on, but we've always been paved properly when there's been a snowstorm. There's approximately 32 houses on the street, and the income being the taxation, I would say, is several hundreds, the residents are paying several hundred thousand a year in taxes, so we have no objection to paying our taxes all the time, but we've always been treated almost like a shit of charm, but we don't think it's fair. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's move to the other front row here, we've got to make a comment.
Good evening, my name is Sean Malloy, and I'm at 521 North Essex Avenue. I was raised on the South Side, I've been a Norworth kid my whole life, went to St. Margaret's, spent my Mave's money at Mave's Toys, I get my cheesesteaks from Real Pizza, I saw Phantom Menace at the Norworth movie theater, back when it had a chandelier, and I worked very hard to come back and move to Essex Avenue, so I could, you know, one day provide very much the same for my family. No one loves the downtown as much as I do. So like any resident, I have a lot of opinions, but I would like to try to stay in my lane. Professionally, I am an actuary for property, habitational, business owner, business apparel insurance. I spend all day collecting mountains of data, so I can prove to the government, who will set many more actuaries than me, scrutinizing that data, what it costs to build, what it costs to maintain, what it costs to finance, you know, habitational, commercial projects. My specialty is in fact mixed use residential, commercial, in areas much like this. My concern with plans that I've seen concerning the zoning for downtown, the, I very much, as someone who grew up here, appreciate the desire to stay in 3 stories. I am, I spend every day looking at mountains of data, but say, that's just not financially viable, and if for some reason, those properties do squeak out and get financing, and they do get built against all odds, the only people who will be able to afford to put retail in those spaces need to benefit from economy of scale, they need to be large commercial. It doesn't surprise me at all that we have Jennies in a chain restaurant, that have moved into the 3-story buildings that were freshly built, because those are the only people who will be able to afford those rents. I love Jennies, I'll be honest, I'll probably go in there right after this, but we got lucky there. If we limit ourselves to 3 stories, it may not get built, if it does get built, it is most likely to be an H&R Block, a T-Mobile, and a Starbucks. And I think, in the grand scheme of trying to retain our view of the nostalgic Norworth in the modern times, that that is a larger sacrifice than a reset 4th floor. Thank you.
Go ahead, if you'd like to step up to the microphone.
Perfect, so yeah, my name is Nick, similar to what the gentleman before me was talking about of Norworth, I'm also a Norworth resident as well, I'm on 81 Road. As a young person living here, I can tell firsthand how hard it is to find affordable housing in our region, many of my peers have already left, because they just can't find a place nearby, and I don't want to be that story. I love Norworth, it's walkable, it has a sense of community, and it also has the ability to get you on a subway train to Center City within 20 minutes. Transit-oriented development is one of the best ways to make sure people my age, and people starting families, actually have a chance to stay there. I know there's uncertainty about subway funding, that's why transit-oriented development matters even more. The more people that live and work in the area of the train station, the stronger the case for keeping the line. And even if transit service changes, transit-oriented development still strengthens our local economy. More neighbors downtown means more customers for our businesses, more energy on our streets, and a stronger tax base to support our community needs. What worries me is that if we delay too long, my generation and the next would be able to live in Norworth at all. We'll lose not just the train, but the young people, the families, and the seniors who do this townwork and see. That's why I urge the council to support transit-oriented development today. It's about housing, it's about sustainability, it's about economic resilience, that's for me, but it's also personal. It's about whether I and others my age can continue to call Norworth home. Thank you.
Okay, just this, just tilt it down. Tilt it down, all right. Okay. Hi, I'm Sammy, 418 Conway. I'm going to be making some comments that are quite similar to my last comments last meeting, because I still feel very strongly about it. I support council exploring TOD, and I want to thank you very much for taking this up and allowing Planning Commission to continue their work. I love Norworth, I love being able to walk to our local businesses, be able to go on nature walks, I love having a community that has so many events and opportunities to meet and people. Where I grew up, it wasn't like that, and that's something that I really value here. I want to welcome new neighbors, who can help us support all of these things, so that when I have kids, which is hopefully quite soon, I can give them a Norworth that is walkable, that has businesses, well-maintained parks, community events, and is just generally a welcoming and loving community, that is affordable to live in. I know that growth can be really hard, and that's why we have the council and a Planning Commission to help us make these hard choices and act in the best interests of the entire community. The real threat, in my opinion only, is that it's not about one or two additional stories on a building, that's, that's not the real threat. The real threat is that we don't give our kids a Norworth that doesn't have a place for them 20 or 30 years from now, that tries to build walls against growth instead of channeling that growth, to build homes for our people, that says it wants a train in a downtown, but just can't find the space for more riders and customers. I believe that we can welcome in new neighbors while also addressing people's concerns about new development, and I have faith in Planning Commission to do that work. So thank you again for letting Planning Commission continue to work and for being stewards of all things that we love about.
Thank you. All right, I'll move, I'll move on to the second row, so starting over here, go ahead.
Hi, everyone, Judge T. Canna, 121 Rockland Avenue, I'm here in my personal capacity as a resident of Norworth.
Step a little closer to my chair.
Yeah.
Or just speak up, yeah.
You will. First, I want to thank Borough Council for continuing the discussion around transit-oriented development, this is an important topic, and I appreciate the councils and Planning Commission's efforts to study TOD and provide recommendations. Part of the reason my family and I moved to Norworth is because of its walkability, and it's access to transit, and because of the lack of standard greater independence from cars. I've come to appreciate how essential these features are of Norworth, as I've lived here and raised my family here, and in fact, I consider them essential. I suspect many others would agree, and they do not want Norworth to be more car-dependent or to see more cars on the road. Norworth was built around the idea of transit-oriented development, the board has even called that, and it can continue to benefit from it going forward. Supporting TOD is especially important as we confront budget crisis facing center. If we do not, we risk losing our ability to maintain the essential features of Norworth's historic character. TOD shows that our promise is a tool for Norworth, some of the changes that have been discussed are modest, but they are a starting point. We've already seen that TOD works for Norworth, both historically and in recent developments, such as EPL. And moreover, research in many other communities around the country shows that TOD is a effective tool and a best practice approach that has positive impacts in towns in Norworth. TOD is also aligned with Norworth's climate action goals, permanent residents have long cared about the environment and taking important steps to reduce our impact on climate. TOD supports efforts helping create submissions for transportation, supporting infrastructure that's less dependent on fossil fuels. These are important parts of Norworth's overall climate strategy. Many of us are concerned about the current funding crisis facing center. The Paoli-Thordale Line would be devastating in Norworth. However, even if and when the current crisis is resolved, without infrastructure supporting the spreader ship, Norworth's station may not be a priority for center in the future. We must do what we can now to futureen Norworth against those scenarios. Lastly, I want to point out the value that transit-oriented development provides for aging in place. One of the things we've learned from studying the effects of aging on cognition is the benefits of an active lifestyle, something that aligns well with TOD. Sadly, Norworth does not have enough housing to support aging in place for our residents to create challenges for families, making it difficult for residents to remain in the community as they age. Transit-oriented development provides valuable opportunities to address this issue, supporting our community, and as residents for decades to come. Norworth's historic characters of transit-oriented suburb is part of what makes it a great place to live. I urge the council and the Planning Commission to continue discussions around this support issue, and move forward and ready with recommendations that will support and enhance Norworth's character as a transit-oriented, walkable, livable town. Thank you.
Thank you. And just because I know it's going to be on everybody's mind, you know, we're all aware that the Paoli-Thordale Line is currently in jeopardy due to.
That's.
Sure, so the train line, the Paoli-Thordale Line, funding sources for that are currently in jeopardy due to disagreements at the state level. We expect that to be resolved one way or another in the next couple of months, so when it comes time for council to be considering this legislation, we'll know what the status of the train line is. So I'll just note that for the record for all of you who are also interested in this issue. We are very interested in it, we are paying a lot of attention, and it will be on our minds when we come to this legislation.
Hello, I'm Youri Shackle, 518 South Norworth Ave. Recently, I'm here, became a mayor, was in Norworth for 15 years, and I still use the train and all the commercial, the amenities of our commercial area. And so I wanted to just build a little bit on the statements in support of transit-oriented development. As Judge T. Canna just mentioned, and I have mentioned it at previous meetings, aging in place is a real life issue for us, and as I've mentioned before, my mom had to move in with us because. my mom had to move in with us because she wanted to live near us, and we couldn't afford, there was no apartment nearby that she could afford on social security income. And so, you know, it's great, we love having her. We would not have chosen to live together if we couldn't have, if there had been more affordable options. So obviously, building a few additional apartments, for example, adding an additional, allowing an additional story...
Mary?
Adding an additional story is not gonna just on its own...
La 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 la!
On its own, suddenly make all housing affordable, but it's a step in the right direction. And I think one thing that I learned recently, through doing a little research, is that often you have these luxury, like, you know, the Elm is not affordable for my mom and for many other people. But in a decade or two, the Elm will become, you know, if it follows trends, it will become more affordable, as housing ages, it tends to become more affordable. So sometimes we have the situation where you're kind of allowing it to be built, knowing that it's not gonna change, it's not gonna support a broad demographic of people in the moment, but it's kind of built in for the future. Another thing that I'll say is just that, you know, for my kids growing up, going to Marion Elementary, you know, living in Narberth, it was really important that they have friends, some of whom live in apartments, some live in small civil families, in twins, and some live in big houses. And so I really think that there's a loss, you know, I just, I just put it the other way. I think that there's a huge benefit, not just for aging-in-place, and not just for young, you know, kind of 20-somethings, but also, you know, just to have a more vibrant community in which different kinds of people can live. And, you know, if you look historically, like, you know, I don't think it's on the lines of anyone right now, but if you look at the history of the zoning, kind of standards and patterns in the United States, a lot of them were created specifically to discriminate against younger people. And it's not that anyone now is thinking about that specifically, but that's, that's kind of how they were created, and I think that we're like, you know, in some cases, we're trying to, with the restrictions on apartments, to some degree, kind of are like a zombie that lives on in our other planning. And so really, I would just urge the council to really look carefully at transit-oriented development and, you know, and really, I urge you to, to act and support transit-oriented. Thank you.
Hi, Madam Mayor, council members, council president, Mr. Solicitor, Borough Manager, greetings. It's great to be here with you again. I have two remarks, I have two public comments on Narberth Voice, which I will remove to your head. My first comment is to just give you an update on Fongi, which is the Friends of Narberth Green Initiative, a not-for-profit organization in Narberth that was created with assistance by Narberth Borough. Two, our mission will be to support green practices initiated by the residents who have entered Narberth Borough to identify, improve, reserve, steward, and revitalize urban space. We've received our 501(c)(3) not-for-profit status, and I'm really pleased to say that it was Peter Grove's wish to donate $10,000 towards the Friends of Narberth Green Initiative. And he has writes here that this $10,000 should go towards initiatives in the new park just outside the tunnel, this is his wish to earmark it this way, and it's hoped the money will be spent on plenty of trees, shrubs, and wildflowers, pollinators, picnic benches, benches, perhaps some swings rather than a chain link fence. Concrete or other landscapes, he said, as Willie goes out. So, just happy news that I wanted to share with all of you and the Friends of Narberth Green, after being established in 2010, it's finally out to the starting line, and that's the way to share the news with you. I do have a quick comment, just about the, I guess we'll say it's about the TOD, under the TOD umbrella. When council members, when you all stepped up to serve, you also appointed boards and commissions. And these bodies give us a democratic, evidence-based process while advising about individual preferences. Think about our Civil Service Commission, or our Environmental Advisory Council. We trust them to guide publicly, policy fairly grounded, to guide us with policy fairly grounded in data, not politics. We don't let political winds decide police hiring or environmental standards, because these decisions must rest on facts and expertise. Planning should be no different. There's a difference between opinions we share at cocktail parties, or over a beer at the greets, or in our backyards, and the informed recommendations of volunteers who devote their time to studying how Narberth can thrive beyond the present moment. That's why I'm glad council will be following the lead of our planning commission. In 1968, the Pennsylvania Legislature created the local planning commissions, precisely to remove political pressure from zoning decisions. They understood that thriving communities don't emerge from shifting opinions, but from analysis, professional guidance, and careful study. Public participation is vital, and every voice matters. At the same time, we rely on the planning commission's training and data to shape policy reasonably. Democracy is strongest when we balance both value and community input and respecting the informed recommendations of bodies created for this purpose.
Your time has expired. Thank you. I'm sorry. Are you off stuff?
Yeah, that's rude, thank you. No, I gave, I gave 19 years of public service to Narberth. I think you give me 20 more seconds. I honestly, I think that would be fair, and it's truly, really rude. I, I'm really offended by that, that, I'm truly offended by this, George, Fred.
I, I feel I can't...
I sat with this councillor for 11 years, I sat on the planning commission for six years. I'm entitled to say that that process matters, and you guys are... You guys have an obligation, as a trust of the people, to give us faith that our government works, to follow that mandated process.
I'm not listening to what you're saying.
And I appreciate that you will follow it. It's beyond politics, there's young people here right now, because this is not an issue about the moment, this is about the future. The Nazis will be living here anymore. That was rude.
I'm sorry, Bob, I, I have to give everybody three minutes. Sorry about that. There's a lot of folks here waiting to talk. I apologize, I'm gonna cut everybody off in three minutes.
That's a hard act to follow. Good evening, council members, good evening, Mayor. My name's Serge, I've lived on Wendell for 23 years. I've even had the chance to sit in those council seats, so I know how hard it is. Thank you for what you do and your volunteer work. For the last third, yeah, for the last third of my time in Narberth, 23 years, I got the opportunity to do to work through the train station. When I was lucky, I even found Mr. Samuelson on the train. For, for five years, I haven't even had a car, because I don't want one, and didn't need one. I'm arguing for transit-oriented development and the density increase. They call Narberth a hidden treasure. What they're really saying is people just don't end up here by chance. If you're driving on Haverford on plan, it's because your phone rerouted you around another downtown area, and for once, you would actually listen to Google Maps. Our downtown businesses depend on, on people, and require people to already be walking around. Each new apartment downtown has more customers, including their friends and families, buying books, bread, coffee, beer, soup, or a langkorn, that is the best dish at tree ever. Without new housing, we're shutting up the next generation of families, like teachers and first responders, who shouldn't be able to live in a community they serve. In terms of parking, if you can always, if you could always find a parking spot in downtown Narberth on a Saturday, which I think is true, that isn't a gift, it's a warning. Empty asphalt and empty storefronts go hand in hand. We will never beat the parking convenience at King of Prussia or Target. Amazon, Amazon has already won that game too. They don't need parking lots when they've got you front porch. No amount of Narberth parking is going to bring that shopping back here. Parking minimums just make it worse. They're like a tax disguised as asphalt. Every space, space, eats up the chance for one more neighbor to keep a shop alive. That parking space has never bought anyone a beer, another made neighbor just money. Our history is clear, there is no Narberth without the train station. The borough started as a stop for the Belmont Racetrack. This town was built for walking and riding, not for storing cars. And if we want to preserve Narberth, why aim to freeze ourselves in the traffic jams of the 50s, 60s, and 70s? What makes that time better? How about that preserving of Narberth's fatalities of the 1910s, 20s, 30s, 40s, and 50s? When Narberth thrived as a compact, train-connected village. Narberth has always been a tolerant release, the YHCA, the commercial block by the station, the apartments that replaced the Windsor Ave Victorians. At the time, people said they were oversized. Today, we just call them Narberth. The same will be true if you allow six, eight, even 10 stories. 50 years from now, people will just say, "That's just Narberth," because council took the bet. And honestly, what view are we protecting in this four-story squat limit? The bridge that's been, that view of the bridge that's been crumbling for 23 years that I've lived here? Nobody's framing a picture of that, even Blackwell.
All right, thank you. Your time has expired. Sorry. I'll try to give everybody 10-second warning. Okay. I'll move on to the... Anybody in the second row on this side wish to come up and speak? All right. We'll move on to the third row over here. Anybody wish to come up and speak?
Hello, councilors. My name is Matt, I live on 411 Grove Place. My wife and I bought a house in South Narberth three years ago, which we paid way too much money for what we got. That being said, I think that's a story for a lot of folks, and I grew up here. It was important to me that my wife and I could have a child and raise a family here. I'm near my parents. We love our block, we love our neighbors. That environment is really important to me, but I remember what Narberth was like in the 90s, and I remember Ricklands, I remember American Family Market, I remember Mapes. I remember Narberth downtown having useful stores that actually saved you a car trip to a Big Box store, and I want that again. And I don't think we're gonna be able to have it if we don't have more foot traffic in downtown. And if we can have more foot traffic in downtown, and we can do that, advancing our affordability and our equity goals, and we can do that without adding a pile of cars to the borough that we don't need... My family does not own a car. We moved to Narberth because it was a place that we could live without a car. That's really important to me. And if we can invite more neighbors to live in our community without adding a bunch of extra cars, I support that wholeheartedly. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Martha Barsley, and I live on 1 Shirley Circle. And I lived here for four years when I was in graduate school, and then back 21 years ago. And I just wanted to say that everything that everyone is saying is exactly why I love Narberth as well. And it seems as though this is, that this decision about transit-oriented development, I'm just learning about this, is pretty straightforward, because it seems like we all want the same thing. But I understand that even if we all want the same thing, the outcome, that there may be different ways of getting there. And so it's just good for me to be here, and I'm glad to hear that everyone's coming. And I have a 22-year-old son who wants to live here. So I just, I'm just not hearing that people are saying something, anything different here. And I just wanted to want to know that I'm on Shirley Circle, and I care, and I'm interested in learning more.
Okay. Anybody in this row? Third row? Okay. Fourth row over here?
Hi, my friends. I'm Barbara Fortner, I live at 415 Conway. I want to say firstly, I truly appreciate each of you for stepping into this role. I personally know how much time and energy it requires to do this job well, and you won't do that. I also want to recognize the work of our boards and commissions. They too are composed of volunteers who spend a great deal of time and energy serving the residents of Narberth. While I was on council, a number of issues arose that generated a lot of public interest. When I was interviewing for my first stint on council, I was asked how to make a decision in those situations. Would I choose what I personally wanted? Would I choose what the loudest voices in the room wanted? Or something else? I said that I would study the information available and choose the direction that would keep Narberth moving forward, not stagnating. What I didn't know when I answered that question was how vital the work of the boards and commissions would be in supporting me in making a decision. They provided informed, well-thought-out, A, political recommendations that required me to think beyond the current moment and consider what is best for Narberth five, 10, 50 years down the road, long after I'm dead. That meant that sometimes my decision would be in line with what I personally wanted, and sometimes not. Sometimes it would be in line with the loudest voices in the room, and sometimes not. To get council the information you need to make a future decision on transit-oriented design zoning changes, I support following the direction offered by Michael Gaudini as the most efficient and effective way to allow the planning commission to continue thinking beyond the current moment and propose what is best for Narberth in the long term. I think this will put council in the best position to make a decision that keeps Narberth moving forward. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Maureen. I'm not the shortest person in the room. Maureen O'Leary, I live on Wendell Road. I'm gonna be really brief, and I'm gonna ask you to not listen to me, because I'm old and I'm the past, and I think you should listen to people that are younger in the future when it comes to your opinions about these things. But if you do want to listen, I will say one brief thing. Narberth isn't perfect, it can't stay the way it is, it's not a museum. We don't live in a perfectly preserved place, nor would we want to. We moved here, my family moved here, and we resigned ourselves to not having diversity. That's what we gave up to move here. It's unperfect, I don't want to go back, I don't want to preserve it the way it is, I want to make it better. I think other people are arguing to make it better too, and I just would warn guests this idea that we preserve something forever and for the future. And again, listen to you, young people. Thank you.
Anybody else in that row? Okay, we'll move to this row. Fourth row, back here.
Tom Self, too. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you a warning.
Thank you. Tom Riggert, 208 Allen Avenue. I've been in Narberth for over 20 years. My wife serves on council. This is the first time I'm making a public comment, might be my last as well. My running joke is that when reelection comes around, I try to look for the other guy's lawn sign to put on my yard, just because I know how hard and taxing that it is to be a council member. So I want to start with that in the beginning. I thought a lot about this issue, and I know it originally was sort of coming up for a vote. And for many of you, you really painted a wonderful picture of the future that I would agree with. But I was thinking that there's a difference between being a single-issue voter and a single-issue representative. I think part of what council has to do is hear lots of different issues, and sometimes really competing issues, right, contradictory issues. And it's the work to listen carefully and find a fair and just process that ideally reflects our community's collective wisdom. Again, I don't know the answer, but I do have some questions about TOD. Do we agree that TOD is gonna change some of the look and feel of our downtown? If it is, what are some of those changes that we can control, and what are some that we can't? How do we evaluate those changes? Council gets accused of pursuing agenda items that are looking after developers' interests more than citizens. How do we combat that false impression? How do we show transparency in balancing competing priorities and interests? And we do have some other major projects, right? Very good news about the bridge, we have 230 Haverford. If we push for more TOD projects, is that gonna take away from some of these longstanding projects that might dilute efforts and resources? Democracy, even in our little town, requires time, conversation, and many voices. Data-driven decisions are good, I recognize the benefit of expert opinions, but these do not replace the work of surveys, town halls, conversations, things that we're doing right now. Some of these TOD decisions might be the right one, and they'll pan out, but if we don't go through a fair process, I think those results will be tainted. So I encourage you just to stay... So I encourage you just to stay committed to that process of listening. Thank you.
Anybody else from that row? All right, we'll move to, I think, the back row. Running the back row on this side. Kirk, come on up to us.
Good evening. Dennis Allen, 29 Hanson Court. Here to confirm some things about the maintenance. Obviously, it's clear from earlier conversation with my neighbor that the roads, et cetera. But the one thing that's not specifically mentioned in the ordinance is the wall and the land between the wall and Montgomery Ave. Because in January of this year, I received a, or a zoning, or a code violation from Kevin Walsh and for putting up a sign on the wall of Hanson Court, on the wall section of my house. And he consulted with John. John, you might remember that conversation. So what I want to confirm is, because he told me I had to take the sign down because it wasn't my property. So are you saying now through this ordinance that that wall is, and that land and the sidewalk is now my property? That's what I'd like to confirm with the borough and John.
I'm not saying that the wall is her property or to say it's not the borough's property.
Okay, but so how would I have to remove a sign on a wall that's not mine? But now, who does the wall belong to?
I believe it belongs to the Hanson Court community.
We don't have an HOA.
I know you don't, but there's maintaining, someone's maintaining that wall. Someone's going to maintain it.
If I may, the individual property owner should butt up to the wall, maintain.
Is this the wall within your property line?
What?
Is the wall within your property line?
Well, I re, I evaluated, I va, thank you for your assistance. I evaluated the deed and the, and it appears, but that didn't stop me from getting a notice of violating code by hanging something on it, even though it appears that that wall is on my property.
Is the wall on your property?
Yes, it appears to be based on the deed and property records from about every house.
All the way along the road?
Well, there's a portion of the wall on my property and there's a portion of the wall on his property.
So it would be your responsibility to maintain that wall?
I'm asking you. Because Kevin said it's not my wall, I can't hang a sign on it.
My understanding is that it is a community wall. I understand there's no association. There should have been.
Okay.
Just as someone needs to own the two pillars where the lights are, we're maintaining the lights at this point. I attempted to get permission of the owners on both sides before we even made those replacements. I'm not sure if those agreements were ever executed because I was concerned about actually making those repairs and who all knows. The wall, but my understanding, it belongs to what is a defunct or never-created homeowners association. I mean, if the borough wanted to tear down that wall, my understanding is you would not want that to happen. Just if the borough wanted to remove those pillars and lights, you would not want that to happen because it's used by the association. And it's not to the benefit of the borough. So it is a gray area. But my understanding is, and I could be wrong if I'm asking your deeds, that is, but I didn't know if it was in your law. I thought it might have been a right-of-way of some sort. Some of your property line goes up to the wall.
It appears that the right-of-way is to Montgomery Ave, which would include the wall. But I just wanted to double-check since I had this opportunity given today.
All right, if I can jump in here, I mean, our perception is that the language of this code, of this amendment doesn't change anything relating to who owns what.
I think he's trying to figure out another issue, whether or not he can hang signs on.
So I think that we need to have a little discussion.
If I'm responsible for maintaining it.
I think we need to have a little discussion about who owns this stuff.
The sign on the side.
My position would be you, as the landowner, would not be responsible for maintaining your wall if it's not on your property line. If it started to fall down, we're not going to cite you for that wall falling down.
But if I put up a sign, you're going to cite me?
Because it's not your property, it says it's not your property.
So that makes no sense, John?
No, it's exactly the same thing. It's not your wall to hang a sign, and it's not your wall to fix to be responsible for. So it's the same concept.
Okay, so I don't have to fix it? Just don't put a sign on it? Also?
Because it's not.
Because it's not mine?
Correct.
Okay.
And because it's not yours, you're not responsible for maintaining it.
Good. What about the grass and sidewalk?
If it's in the right-of-way, again, I'm not sure where's, who's where that is.
Okay. Well, I, yeah, this is very helpful because it's important to note.
Yeah, if it's outside of your property line, again, you usually have to maintain a sidewalk that's in your property line within the right-of-way. So you have to maintain grass if it's in your property, even though it might be in the right-of-way. If your property line ends before the road, then that would not be your property.
Okay, thank you. I will follow up with Kevin because I'm waiting for clarification from him too. Thanks.
Okay. All right. Is there anybody else in this room who wishes to make a public comment? Who has not been able to make a public comment? Okay, let's move to people who've been patiently waiting online, I assume, to make a public comment, so.
We'll say if you are on Zoom and have a public comment, please just raise your hand and we will call on you. We're going to go down the list. So first on the list, just says iPhone. So once I call on you, unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Carol Murray. I'm on Sabine Avenue. Several questions I have for council. Firstly, is the private school still interested in the 201 Sabine building? My question is, you like me to give you all of them at once? What is the status for the appraisal assessment for Montgomery Avenue, Sabine Avenue, known as Sabine Park? And is such appraisal or assessment hasn't been prepared or drafted? And then following along that line, what is the timeline for the appraisal and assessment of Sabine Park that was mentioned a couple of months ago in council meeting? Also, I want to know, with this talk of the Elmwood property and the ride date being mentioned for high-sensitivity apartments, is Sabine Park now out of the Crosshair Score Development? And can we get permanent open space protection placed on all of our parks? The Narbor Park, the Sabine Park, and Elm Park? And then finally, do people who don't live in Narbor influence council more than the Narbor tax-paying residents? Or do they have influence on council over or along with the Narbor residents? Because it seems that a whole lot of people who live in Marion, a whole lot of comments, and they're not Narbor residents, and this is not their borough, even though they're neighbors, even though they're wonderful people, the Narbor residents are the ones that should have the nature standpoint that's in Narbor.
All right, so quickly response. The school that had been interested in the property has cooled off a bit. They are no longer actively pursuing, they're no longer actively pursuing purchase of the building. We are awaiting, we've heard that there are some other groups who may wish to do an adaptive reuse of the site. We have given them a couple of months to come to us with a proposal. And if we don't hear from them by our October meeting, we will probably be proceeding with the appraisal. There have been no changes to the appraisal. Historically, we have allowed anyone who wishes to make a public comment to come to our meeting and make a public comment. And that's just been the general policy. I don't think there's any.
Which is fine if they make public comment. But as far as public policy that affects Narbor residents, Narbor residents are the ones who should be able to have their voices be heard over non-residents.
I think everybody is entitled to make a public comment, and we will make our own judgment as to how to proceed from those public comments. Ultimately, it's council that makes the decisions, Carol Murray, and not anybody else in this room. So we listen, and we hear people's opinions, and then we act accordingly. But to suggest that anybody, I don't like what you're suggesting. So we'll leave it at that. And your time has expired, so thank you. Let's move on to the next.
Julianna Parry.
Thank you. I promise I'll be brief. As a non-driver who moved, oh, sorry, I should say, I'm at 7 Elmwood Avenue here in Narbor. As a non-driver who moved to Narbor because I can walk to the train, grocery store, downtown, and the library, I support transit-oriented development in principle. As an IT professional with a library degree, I support planful, evidence-based policy. As the planning commission and the council continue to research TOD, I ask that you consider what guardrails can be included in legislation to require that genuinely affordable housing now, not decades from now, is included in TOD developments. As has been said, current options aren't affordable and accessible, and that's one of the concerns that I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not see any other hands raised for public comment on Zoom.
Okay, if anybody else on Zoom wishes to make a public comment, please either raise your hand or unmute yourself. Is that everything? Okay. Thank you, everyone. And I do want to commend everybody for the general tone and the collegiality of the conversation here. I found it very refreshing.
Fred?
I'm just being quiet.
We have one more?
It looks like we might have one more.
Okay, if we have one more, go ahead. I have not closed it yet.
It's interesting.
Nancy, did you want to make a comment?
Here you go.
Perhaps not.
Nancy, did you want to make a comment? We, you're unmuted. Oh, you just muted yourself.
Okay, that sounds like it was a mistake. Anyway.
No, she's talking. She's talking.
She is talking.
Nancy, go ahead.
No, I don't need to. I have many things I'm thinking, but I won't make a comment right now. Sorry.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so thanks once again, everyone. All right, I'm going to close public comment. And we'll move on to our first agenda item, which is discussion of the zoning updates. So Maggie, do you want to lead us off with it? Do you want me to frame this?
I can update on the recodification efforts.
So the current project that our planning commission is working on is a recodification of the zoning code. Maggie's been involved in the process pretty intimately.
Yes. So the efforts that the planning commission is working on right now related to the recodification of the zoning ordinance is a policy-neutral, structural change only to the zoning code. What that means is that we're not making any modifications to any standards, dimensional requirements, nothing that's actually going to impact the zoning itself. We're simply changing the structure of it. So just imagine you're going from remote, if you ever copy something from the internet and put it in a Word document and the formatting gets all weird, we're just changing the formatting. So we're taking exactly what the zoning code says now and restructuring it into an easier-to-read, understand, complicate, and administer zoning ordinance. We have been working with a small group of planning commission along with our Montgomery County Planning Commission consultant planner in these efforts. So we've been having small groups to tackle this. The planning commission has not yet seen a full draft of this. We do anticipate that they will be seeing a full draft of the recodified ordinance proposal at their October meeting. Again, policy-neutral plan. But we anticipate that it will be ready for a October planning commission meeting. It will then go through the review process with the planning commission, who will review and provide comment. The public will have a chance at that time to comment as well. The draft will be available for review. And then we will make any edits as necessary. And then it will come back before planning commission in November, and we'll continue that process. I anticipate that we'll have something finalized and ready for adoption by this board by December or January. But again, timing can change depending on how much comment we have and how much more we need to work through. But we are making progress through that, that, those means.
All right, and I think that council's general goal is going to be to have our consultant, our Montgomery County Planning Consultant and the planning commission to dedicate their time to this discussion as soon as they wrap up the recodification. I think that is the.
Yes, so this is, like I said, it's with a small group right now. So we can't have concurrent projects ongoing while we finish the recodification. But the bulk of any sort of zoning text amendment drafting would likely need to wait until we're further through the recodification process. But that would not stop planning commission from engaging in discussions about any new projects that council wishes to authorize them to discuss.
Okay. Council members clear on this path forward, further discussion? Okay. So I think our next step is going to be to create, so to generate a structure for planning commission to proceed with their discussion. So planning commission has already had some preliminary discussions. They've sent us some of their recommendations. I think I'd like us to engage with those recommendations and determine which of them we'd like them to flesh out further and what other sort of goals or what else we would like them to consider during this period. I think that that is going to be the next step for council here, and that should give planning commission topics for discussion for the next several months, at which point some of this will percolate back to council. So we have, we have two kind of different visions for how to proceed with this. I think I'll let Michael and Cindy both talk about what they feel should be planning commission's main focus, or I'll let them each talk and. We should go first. Cindy, you're vice president. You can go ahead. Go first here.
Well, I'm glad that we quickly pivoted to create a transparent and a collaborative zoning discussion. But I have to hold that this is still premature until we've confirmed that we actually have transportation and funding for SEPTA. I depend on SEPTA for work and will need to buy a car if we don't have reliable transit in our community. Narbor needs to evolve with the times. No one's disputing that. However, I would argue it needs to be iterative and inclusive. And we did, three council members did put a document in your package so you can see how we suggest to do that. We have historic boroughs in our downtown, half of which remains vacant. I would like us to very intentionally concentrate on the efforts of council and staff in supporting the completion of that project as much as we have the power to do so. Because we will hear from our business owners. We've heard from you all. It is critical that 230 Haverford get developed, right? Let's focus those efforts there, which leads to kind of my second point. We really need to demonstrate a clear and transparent timeline for a matter that our neighbors care deeply about. You're all here in August. Narbor empties out in August, and you're all here. So we know this is critical, and I want to make sure that we have a transparent timeline. We also need to follow standard zoning processes. We need to utilize our objective planning experts at the county level. And we see a lot of the data that was in the planning commission, and we're citing Buffalo and Minnesota and Seattle. We have county experts that are going to use those regional data that are really going to, I think, pull us all along in a conversation that's applicable to us here in Narbor. So I have a couple of questions that I'm going to ask as part of this process, and then really want to go back to a timeline so you all can hold us accountable. And so you know what? You said the data was going to be presented and we would have two weeks to review it. You know, or you said the policy was going to review and there was going to be a month for dialogue. In the meantime, I want to ask that our Montgomery County Planning Commission, we refer to that as MCPC, really explore housing typology to address that missing middle, right? So people have an opportunity to gain equity. You all wrote that in the comprehensive plan. The community wrote, "We want diverse housing." I want to ask the county to explore economic housing series application in Narbor, not nationally, but hyper-local. So in other words, does increased apartment rents lower or increase rent and sale prices? Local realtors are saying they're seeing something very different. You know, the expression goes, right? Like all tides lift boats, or rents. We have at our disposal in the county experts that can tell us that, that can learn from the density at Lower Marion and surrounding us. I'd like us to depend. I'd like us to depend on that. I'd also like to ask the question, what are the current zoning limitations that restrict the application of that missing middle, right? There is something between giant box apartments and big single-family homes, right? Let's explore that. The Montgomery County Planning Commission has explored ways to support a broader range of housing types just besides those, right? Single-family and apartment buildings. We're seeing successful iterations of missing middle housing such as duplexes, triplexes, bungalows, courts, townhouses, ADUs being throughout the county that allow people first buying homes or folks aging in place. Let's explore how we can do that here. You know, we have a heart in an effort to maintain the small-town character in our community. How can we balance both of these competing community values in our zoning? I want this to be done on the community timeline and not a developer's. I don't want us to be reactive. I want us to be thoughtful and iterative with the understanding, like what you all said, this is a generational decision, let's do it well. This is not a stop sign that we're going to put up and say, oops, actually, we made a mistake here. Uh, and I think we have the local experts in our county to be able to guide us on these questions. I am concerned that I've asked our Planning Commission several times, please give me what else is possible, and I have yet to get those answers. I'd like the county to ask, to really explore that. And there is a submission of a timeline that I don't know if we're going to get to this, to say, I really think we need the community who cares deeply about this and Council to understand what is the expectation for communication? What are the timeline on when reports are up? I mean, our packet changed significantly in about a week's time. When there will be opportunity for the public to come forward, where will notices be made? Uh, I don't know if you plan to do that tonight.
Well, I think generally we'd like to create a webpage on their, uh, you know, a, a page on the Borough's website that will summarize, uh, which meetings we're going to be discussing this, what we've already decided. Um, it would include some of the material, you know, whatever reports we get from the county, we can put that up on the Borough's website. I think we want to include it in the flash anytime there's a meeting coming up. And we'd like to have, I think we all agree, we'd like to have a public meeting, you know, not, not a council meeting, but a, a public meeting where, where members of the public can come up and ask questions more informally, and I won't be sitting here with a three-minute timer.
I agree.
So that would be next year.
And we need to have some of these questions answered, because I have to tell you, I, I want the local data, um, and I want the questions answered on the missing middle and housing typology. And okay, I'm hearing the, the realtor say something different than the economist. Let's talk about that. Let's use, you know, I wrote an email to someone, I, I'm a social scientist, I make evidence-based decisions. I also very intentionally incorporate people with a lived experience, because I think we can do, we can do both, because we all care about this town. So I want to pass to my Ben O'Wesley.
I'll, I'll just jump in, I'll say I was excited that, uh, I, we just, well, we are going to approve later on a, uh, a certificate of appropriateness to work on, on a property that's also going to include an ADU, which I think is going to be the first ADU in Borough, or the first legal ADU.
Exactly.
So, uh, that, we, we did write the ADU ordinance a couple of years ago, and I think this is going to be the first actual.
And that's an accessory dwelling unit or a granny pod.
Yeah.
And as an item of interest, that house, not currently, but used to be my uncle's house.
All right.
Yeah, I've got some, uh, thoughts on this. I've written them up and, um, and I appreciate your indulgence in stopping, it's really important. Um, and I wanted to take some time to speak about this because it's probably also not lost on anyone that I've kind of become the unofficial, uh, or maybe at this point official sponsor of this conversation. Uh, and there are a lot of policy questions packed into this topic here that matter a whole heck of a lot to me, questions of housing options and affordability, and strengthening the customer base for our businesses and the ridership base for SEPTA, and figuring out how we can grow in a way that is environmentally sustainable and fiscally sustainable so that we can do a better job of maintaining our parks and infrastructure. All that's in the, the supplemental materials to the meeting, you can find that online along with this slew of other expert resources if you want some truly stimulating reading. Um, I'm also collecting the many questions I've heard, uh, so I can ensure full due diligence of these policy concepts. Uh, many folks have, have written to us via email, I'm collecting those. If you're listening in now, don't worry, I have read them, I appreciate you writing, I will be getting back to y'all, and I hope everyone remains engaged with this policy, uh, conversation going forward. Um, I know that in the past there have been deficient processes, um, the rush to downzone the entire downtown several years ago, for instance, I believe happened over the span of one month, uh, over the objections of our Planning Commission. And this conversation in contrast has been going on at Council and Planning Commission since early beginning of the year. It's picked up various threads from prior conversations, uh, and it will be continuing deliberatively in the months ahead, in the next year, um, led by our Planning Commission. Um, I have, I have offered Council direction and backup to that effect, um, which will include creating a webpage, uh, specific to this, including information, um, and blasts, having a town hall, um, and allowing Planning Commission to continue deliberately. But it's also not just some sort of intellectual policy exercise. The topic about how do we grow, how do we identify and plan for the next increment of growth is one that is really close to my heart, and that's what I want to express today and why. A lot of y'all already know this, uh, this community raised me. My momma and pop-pop came to Norbert in 1950. They were Italian immigrants, they were living in West Philly, and they found a nice little row home on Woodbine Avenue in what used to be known as the Italian section of Norbert. They lived there for roughly the next 60 years till they moved in with my uncle over in Bala, and to this day, the 200 block of Woodbine is one of my favorite blocks in the borough. I remember walking there after school, uh, when my parents weren't home from work yet. I remember my momma hanging out with all the ladies at the beauty parlor, and she ran, and the mounted deer head that my pop-pop had in the back of his tailor shop, had a little red, uh, light bulb on the nose during Christmas time, maybe a little bit dark. And I remember sitting and reading on the couch next to an old rotary phone, uh, and dinners with momma insisting that you needed even more food. What I didn't know at the time, and I doubt momma and pop-pop knew this either, was how fraught things had been a generation before, when those row homes along Woodbine and along Iona and Hampton were being built in the early 1900s. Um, because those row homes, they didn't look like anything else in Norbert at the time. And if you've ever looked at the Norbert history map online, you know that up until that point, most of Norbert consisted of, of larger detached structures and larger lots. And these row homes were smaller, they were compact homes on smaller lots, they were, they were denser, they covered almost the entire whole lot, and they were intended specifically to be able to hit a lower price point than anything else in the borough up until that time. And yes, many of those row homes started out as rental space, and in the same way that many other properties in the borough, including larger multifamily property, have transitioned back and forth between rental and ownership over time. Um, and these row homes are part of our fabric today, and they've been with us at this point for over a century, and they're quintessentially Norbert, but they were not without controversy when they were built. When you, when you look at the time period when they were built, you look at the local newspaper, there were folks writing in with their concerns about how these rural homes looked and, and, and were they consistent with Norbert's character or not, and, and, and how would they, they affect different things like property values and all other sorts of, of issues? Um, and there were even controversies over one of the developers who built some of those row homes in that area. And by 1924, Norbert's mayor was publicly calling for the borough to ban row homes entirely. And a couple of months later, that's effectively what Borough Council did. I didn't know any of that at the time when I was sitting in my momma and pop-pop's house as a kid, because their home was fortunate enough to have gotten in before the ban. We got a home. We got to become Narbs because of decisions that had been made a generation before. And Norbert got a tailor and a beautician, and St. Margaret's got a football coach, the Fourth of July Committee got a treasurer, Norbert even got a little Temple Student documentary about its own history, all because of some decisions that were made 100 years ago, uh, that Norbert was ready for just that next increment of growth. And when you go forward from there and you look at Norbert's history, you continue to see this ongoing push-pull over how to plan for housing and what type and where. After the borough banned row homes, you begin to see apartment buildings coming to town, Brenton Hall Apartments, 1928, Narbert Hall Apartments, 1929. And then, uh, nearly 90 years ago, in 1938, the borough saw what to this day remains the largest apartment development in its history, Montgomery Court Apartments. Uh, and the Planning Commission discussed concerns, and I've got a quote here from some of the, the things that they were concerned about, traffic congestion on roads, overload of sewer weeds, and change of the residential tone of Norbert. Those were the concerns. But they worked through those concerns, and they planned for them, and today those buildings offer our family, friends, and neighbors some of the most excessively-priced housing options in the borough because of those decisions that were made generations before. And on through the 40s and 50s and the 60s and the 70s, there were controversies, there were efforts to restrict growth, there were efforts to plan for growth, and, but overall during that span of time, the borough worked to provide places for, for friends and family and neighbors and new neighbors to live. Um, and with these people, our business district grew and it thrived, and our civic life grew and it thrived, and our tax base as well grew and it thrived. And, and Norbert built a reputation as a place where people from all walks of life could come together as a community, and others in the area looked down on us and they considered us to be the armpit of the main line, but we knew that that was our strength, right? And then starting a bit in the 70s and ramping up in the 80s, um, Council made a series of policy decisions that effectively said, no more, uh, we, we do not want to plan for that next increment of growth. And they, and they didn't outright ban it, even though that was effectively the goal, they just made it infeasible to do. And so from 1980 to 2020, out of all 62 municipalities in Montgomery County, every single one of them, Norbert was dead last in terms of the growth rate of our housing stock. But we were top three in terms of how much more expensive we got over that period of time. Now, yes, it is true, we have seen some growth within the past several years, and it is also true that we're coming off of several decades in which we mostly did not plan for that next increment of growth. And trying to keep a lid on that rather than planning for it has created a pressure cooker. The value of the land, the dirt under our feet, has escalated rapidly, it has driven up the cost of our housing, it is making it harder for friends and family members to afford to live here, it is driving up the commercial rents for our local businesses, while their customer base largely stagnates because we haven't properly planned for the customers that otherwise would have moved here and joined us and shopping in our downtown businesses every day. And yes, our public transit has been impacted, and, and let's just put aside for a moment all the absolute nonsense occurring in Harrisburg right now, and, and think back to just a couple of years ago, when SEPTA reevaluated their entire bus system network, okay? They looked at ridership to determine which bus routes they were going to boost and which ones that they were going to contract. And when they looked at the 44 bus, which today goes through the heart of Norbert, the bus that I used to pick up at Windsor and Iona and today I pick up at Essex and Sabine, SEPTA looked at the ridership figures for the 44 bus, and they said it no longer made sense to run that bus through the heart of Norbert anymore, it could just stay on Montgomery Avenue. As I said months ago, when we first started this policy conversation, uh, transit only runs if there's riders and businesses only thrive if there's customers, and both of those things are easier to get when they're right here in your own community. And in some ways, our task today is so much harder than it was 100 years ago, because back then they were planning out large tracts of undeveloped land, and if you missed an opportunity here, that's okay, there was other land over there. Today, we're a built-out community, and, and that provides us with stability. Most properties in the borough will not sell in any given year, and of those that do, most will not redevelop, and of those that do, most are not actually in zoning districts that allow mixed-use or apartment buildings today, and of those that are, most are on very constrained sites that actually limit what you're able to achieve anyway. And even if you check all of those boxes, you're in the borough's historic district most likely, and you will need to come and ask us for permission if you want to demolish anything built before 1945. And all of that makes it incredibly critically important that we proactively plan for the next increment of growth in the situations when growth does occur. We are no longer in the days of, oh, you missed an opportunity here, it's okay, there's another one over there. We are now in the days of, you missed an opportunity here, and now we don't have as many places for people to live, and now we don't have as many customers for our businesses, and now we don't have as many volunteers for our civic groups, and now we don't have as many Narbs riding SEPTA. And individually, each of those missed opportunities are one-offs, they're incremental to the scale of our community, but over time, they will continue to compound. And Norbert may look roughly the same, but our downtown will be weaker, and our civic institutions will be weaker, and our community will be weaker. And I believe strongly that we, as a community, have the capacity to work through these problems together, and to do so in a way that listens to and solves for the very deeply held concerns that people have expressed about things like traffic and building form and infrastructure. I believe we can do that in a way that is both true to those concerns and is true to the core need to be able to plan for that next increment of growth. It is a robust topic, and at times I'm sure that that discussion will be difficult, and I believe we can take that discussion up in the same manner that the Narbs before us took up these same difficult topics. Uh, and for that little kid sitting at his grandparents' place in Norbert 50 years from now, he's not going to know any of this, he's going to be completely unaware of it. But if we do our jobs right, if we take a sober look at the very real challenges we are facing in this community, and if we approach the concerns about impacts in a way that is solutions-oriented, and if we look back to the wisdom of our predecessors who planned out the next increment of growth for this town and built it and strengthened the town we love, then that little kid 50 years from now will have shops to visit, and will maintain parks to enjoy, and a bus and a train to catch, and a place to live. And, and I understand that going forward from here, this will not be an easy policy conversation to have, but in my opinion, it, it is a critically important.
Thank you. So, if Council members will indulge me, I think I'd like to try to summarize Planning Commission's recommendations and what I've heard coming from both of you, and see if we can come up with a list of topics for them to be considering. For progress forward.
It shouldn't just be our conversations, it should be what the county is bringing up, that they have an opportunity, I think.
And I think the community, the community, um, concerns will rise up during the Planning Commission discussion with specifics. I mean, I don't think, I mean, I've heard a lot of goals and what the community wants to see happen. The question is kind of what are the mechanics, what are the nuts and bolts? How do we, how do we, how do we translate that into, into code language?
Actual steps.
Yeah, so I'd, I'd like to propose, so Planning Commission, they sent us a letter in June, and I'm just going to read off the list of things that they recommended. So they were looking at reducing the minimum lot size for properties for, you know, per unit, looking at adjusting front setback requirements, changing our parking requirements to .7 per unit, .5 spaces for small apartments, eliminating visitor parking requirements, eliminating street parking for ADUs, allowing street spaces to count toward parking requirements, so like if you have a spot in front of your property, allowing two-way driveways, approving apartments and condos by right in the districts where they're already allowed for conditional use, which is, uh, the, the downtown districts, I think, the, what? 4A, 4B, yeah, so everything around the downtown and around Montgomery Avenue. And considering changes to impervious surface. So these are all fairly technical changes, and I don't think I've heard any Council members kind of object to any of these individual concepts, like, no, we should totally not look at them. So I would, I would suggest that we, I'll keep going, but I would suggest first of all that we, uh, we tell Planning Commission, we think you should keep looking at some of these technical changes. So for height, I think we would like to consider height, I've heard, um, folks talking about affordable housing, uh, as a, as a requirement, I know that came up in, in some of our discussions. I would prefer them to look at, uh, added height or added stories as part of a density bonus that would require utilizing our green building requirements that we already have in our code, that would require making some percentage of the, uh, housing affordable, and that would require, uh, if they're big enough, signing on to a SEPTA program that gives everybody, uh, all the residents a rail pass. I'm hoping we can have a SEPTA, uh, representative come and talk to us about the program.
Yeah.
Or talk to Planning Commission about the program, but I would, I would prefer them to look at the additional height as a bonus that would make the, that would need these requirements. And, uh, I think we would like to have them listen to. And I think we would like to have them listen to certain experts coming in. So, MCPC, which is our planning partner, we'd like to have a more formal presentation from them. DVRPC, which is also, you know, a local partner. SEPTA. I'd like to hear the Narburg Business Association, see if they want to take a stance on this. And Monco 30%, right? That's the local affordable housing group. So, I would like to have those, I propose that we have those groups speak to Planning Commission during this process. And that Planning Commission incorporate their thoughts into it. And I further agree with Cindy that Planning Commission should be looking at changes to our definition of multifamily housing. So, I've had a conversation with Maggie. And she pointed out several sorts of multifamily buildings that are being built right now. She pointed out a stacked duplex and certain types of quads that couldn't be built in Narburg because right now, we say that a multifamily building has to have one main lobby. And these are buildings that have two separate entrances. So, I think there's an opportunity also to look at what kind of building you can't build in Narburg because our definitions are very restrictive. We have a form-based code. That means that we have very narrow definitions of how things have to be constructed. And we currently don't allow some fairly popular types of buildings. So, that would be great for, we have a lot of smaller lots in Narburg. And that would be an option for, you know.
Well, I think that my question goes beyond, I mean, that starts to it. But what, again, is, our community said we want that missing middle housing. I mean, you talked about the row homes. Where are those possible? People have, one of the number one comments I get from folks is, I want to be able to build equity. You know, whether that's starting out or whether that's aging in place. You know, and I keep asking this question. I'm starting to really feel insane. What else is possible between big, single-family homes and large apartment complexes? Like, that is a specific question. I am hearing from the community. I've written a comprehensive plan and think it's really worth looking at that specific, what else is possible between those two scenarios? So, again, really looking holistically at the borough and say, where are the opportunities to do row homes so people can buy, not just rent? Like, my daughter's a teacher. We're often getting quoted as saying, like, we want teachers. My daughter makes $55,000 a year. To rent in the new luxury apartment, a local realtor told me you have to make $120,000 to qualify with the new credit scores and whatever. Let's have the MCP use that regional data to say, if our goal is affordable housing and getting folks in, are we sure we're right about this? Right? And I think that we need to spell that out a little bit more. Looking at equity, look at the missing middle. What else is possible?
Yeah. So, I would say we ask them, like, what kind of buildings can't we build in Narburg right now because of our code?
Great.
How can we open that up?
Yes.
And they should look at missing middle as like 3A and 3B.
Absolutely, holistically.
So, that's...
But they should be allowed to send us, like, this is a huge conversation. And I've always thought that, yes, we are going to take up missing middle because that's an incredibly important piece to this entire puzzle. There are typologies that we don't have. Like, this is the piece, though. They should be, Planning Commission should be able to take things in chunks and send us pieces of it at a time. Because some of the conversation, for instance, with the TOD, those typologies are already created in our code from a form-based perspective. A lot of the missing middle, like Fred talked about, we don't have typologies for them today. And therefore, they just cannot be provided. And Planning Commission will actually have to spend time developing the typology. Some of them, like Muse Homes, they had already had recommendations for bef... Oh, yeah, that was your idea, wasn't it? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Back when he was on Planning Commission. So, there was some kind of typology work on that in terms of the missing middle that they might be able to brush off. But I think that's going to end up being a broader conversation because they don't have the form controls in place for some of those already. Whereas existing typologies, which is largely what we're talking about, we're talking about the TOD conversation, they already have form controls built into the process.
All right. So, can I just say, the three of us have spoken a lot, like the rest of council and anybody else who wants to speak up to anybody at this table? Let me clarify. So...
I'll start. I want to start where I think we all agree, which is, this town always has transit-oriented development. It was predicated, to a large extent, on transit-oriented development. But it existed because of the train line. You know, the history is there. I don't think anybody at this table disagrees that transit-oriented development is something that we need for our future. My son is 23 years old. It's like, I can tell you, he's just like all the people sat in this front row. He just spent the last two years living adjacent to the Paoli train station with his girlfriend. Because neither he nor his girlfriend own a car or have driver's licenses. Because like a lot of young people, not only is housing not affordable, but car ownership isn't particularly affordable. And, you know, there's one thing that existed in his generation that doesn't exist in mine, which is the existence of ride sharing. And, you know, they have figured out that they can save thousands of dollars a year taking Ubers and Lifts wherever they need to go when they're not getting on the train. And they are not paying for a car. They're not paying for gas or electric, hopefully electric in the future. And they're not paying for insurance. So, you know, I strongly believe that we must continue to figure out the best way to have transit-oriented development. The reason why I joined Cindy last week in sort of saying, hey, wait a second, was that we were being asked to actually give the Planning Commission the go-ahead to focus solely on transit-oriented development and not on the zoning code as a whole. And I had several problems with that. First of all, we're in the middle of recodifying the code. And the original proposal that was given to council last week was to basically have the Planning Commission stop that project, work on transit-oriented development, focus their attention the next two or three months on a transit-oriented development so that they could bring it back to us by December for us to vote on affirmatively to affirmative changes in the zoning code. That actually went against the recommendation of our professional staff who said that it made no sense to put it aside, first of all, because they're almost done anyway, as Ms. Dobbs has already said. But also because if we change the zoning code and then we recodify it, we would have to go back and then redo the very changes that we did to match the recodification. All the numbers would be wrong. The cross-references would be wrong, et cetera. Ms. Dobbs recommends, recommended that we finish the recodification process first, which again is policy neutral. We're just making it more consistent and easier to read because we've gotten complaints over the last two or three years that it's confusing, that it's contradictory, that cross-references don't necessarily make sense. So, all we started with was, can we finish that project first? It's more efficient and it makes more sense. I will also say, my concern, I sort of disagree with the approach. And again, Jim Spear has seen me at more school board meetings than he cares to probably count over the years. And we had this kind of joke. Whenever I go to a school board meeting, Jerry, you can back me up on this one. I would stand up and say, I'm Mike's house and the process guy. I don't care what the ultimate outcome is. The outcome, I think we're going to get, you know, we're tinkering on the edges. But we have to make sure that we have a process that is deliberative and thoughtful and thorough and that we don't create, in a rush, mistakes. And we've had this happen in the past where things got through the Borough Council too quickly, created opportunities for mischief for our developers. Right? And so, we put things in the zoning code. And of course, if we find a mistake and they were right with a plan that's consistent with the code, we're stuck with that. We don't want to have that history repeat itself. And so, you know, my only concern is to be thoughtful, deliberate, and cautious. And I wish that my friend Bob Westford were still here because he talked about, you know, how we have commissions and boards and including the Civil Service Commission. And I served as chair in the Civil Service Commission for several years. We rewrote the Civil Service code while I was here. And we took the time to compare it to other codes, to decide what we wanted to get community input, to make sure that we were hiring, that we weren't creating artificial barriers to hiring police officers, that we would want to hire. And I'll just give you one example of that. The code literally said, if you ever got convicted of smoking a joint, you could not be a police officer in Narburg. It actually said, if you had a, like, if we gave you a lie detector and you lied about smoking a joint, you couldn't be a police officer in Narburg. Now, that seems absurd to me. And we took the time to make sure that, you know, that when we rewrote that code, that we didn't create any artificial barriers that might keep people who are older or of a racial minority that would have a disparate impact on them. We took the time to make sure that we did it right. And all that Cindy and I were asking was, can we make sure that we take the time to do it right? I'll give you a specific example of what happened in this code. The Planning Commission says we should change the height requirement to four stories. The proposal that was put forward to us last week initially said that we should recommend that they change the code on Montgomery Avenue to five stories. Well, I want, I may end up agreeing to that five-story change. But in a week, I can't figure out whether that's an appropriate recommendation to make to override the Planning Commission's own recommendation, which everybody in this room has said, you know, we should rely on them. Why are we telling them that we want to do something different? And if we are going to do that, I want the data. And the justification was put forward was that we don't believe that not having five stories would be commercially viable. And my fast response to that was, the same developer, Ron Saclow, just built a successful, by all appearance, it seems to be a successful development on the Rite Aid property. He owns that whole lot. I don't know why, if we think that he had the ability to build a mixed development on one side of the property using only four stories, that he couldn't do it on the other side, or three stories. They actually recommended that we bump it up by three feet so it could clearly get four stories. Those are the kind of questions that we need to take the time to deliberate. Another example. At some point, I think there's going to have to be a trade-off. We're either going to have to concede height or parking. If we're right, that the developers want, you know, that they're saying the parking requirements are too onerous. And in particular, in an apartment building setting, you know, Michael has quite properly pointed out, if we require an apartment building to use up one level as parking, that's not a recoverable asset. The developer can't make money on that. So, maybe at the end of the day, we want to say, yes, we want to say, you don't have to have any parking if that allows us to keep it down a story. That is the kind of thing that I think the community input is valued because that is a choice that we can make as a community. And, you know, some people are going to say, give them the extra stories so that we can get the parking off the street. And some people may say, you know, I'd rather have the extra parking out there. But my biggest concern about this is that I fundamentally disagree that we should be only focused on transit-oriented development. Michael talks about a missed opportunity. My biggest issue for this community is affordability. My mother was an affordable community advocate. That was her professional job. I grew up learning, you know, being infused with the idea that a community can't exist unless you make it affordable to everyone. The first time I walked into a civic association meeting, the first time I was, after I was appointed to this council, the first person stopped me and said, what are you? I have been a renter in this town for 20 years and I'm about to be priced out of my own community. What are you going to do to make it affordable for seniors? It is something I care deep and passionately about. And I don't think that this, what was proposed to us to go to originally, at least a week and a half ago, adequately addressed affordable housing. It was focused solely on transit-oriented development. Another example. Lower Merion tried to create in their big multi-unit apartment buildings incentives for affordable housing. And they failed. The developers decided not to take those incentives. I want to know why they failed. Were they not rich enough incentives? Were they not big enough? Were they not well enough explained or advertised? We should learn from their mistake and make sure that we don't make the same mistake. If we want affordability as an issue, there are creative ways that are not part of what the proposal was. That was given to us a week and a half ago, even mentioned. There's land trust. There's all sorts of funding issues and things like that that aren't even discussed. Now, some people might say, the problem is we're going to bite off more than we can chew. But I agree with Michael that this is one piece of the puzzle. And I don't want to just focus on this piece of the puzzle without making sure that we're taking into consideration the entire piece. It doesn't mean that they have to come back every time. But I want to make sure that when we're focusing on transit-oriented development, that we also have an eye to transit development oriented that assures some affordability. And not just by creating housing stock that we're hoping that, you know, we flood the markets so prices, so it adjusts to price, supply, and demand. I want to make sure that if we're going to do this, maybe we can do better. And make sure that if we have a set aside, whatever it is that can create, that we can make sure that even our transit-oriented development, whether it's next to the train station or up on Montgomery Avenue, does in fact maximize our opportunities and that we don't have mixed opportunities for that. I'm very glad to hear that part of the additional mission, which again, was not in what was presented to us last week, is, what are we going to do about that middle lane? You know, can we change our code to allow for duplexes, triplexes, conversions of single-family homes? You know, there's a couple on Iona that have been turned into apartments. You can't do that now. We should be able to do that. I want to be able to do that. I don't want that to be put to the back burner because we're single-handedly focused on, in essence, two hot properties. That is a mistake. And I think that we owe it to everybody to just take a deep breath. We're talking about a couple of months. We're not talking years. I have to say, there's some people on social media who claim that Cindy's just doing this as an excuse to rile up the anti-development people. It is not true. You know, none of us are anti-development. I just don't think we should be focusing solely on, in essence, two areas, two distinct areas of the borough when I think that is too myopic of view. I think we can take the time to, over the next couple of months, to, you know, have the robust discussions that we want to, to make sure that we have the pulse of the community, to make choices within the context of not no development, but the hard choices that we're going to have to make going forward. I just want to close by saying, I fundamentally disagree with the idea I just want to close by saying, I fundamentally disagree with the idea that we should not listen to the, to the, what some people have called the pitchfork crowd, you know, what. All of you came here because you care about the community. It doesn't mean that we have to listen to the loudest voices. I'm not going to listen to the loudest voices. But I taught diver, I, you know, I was a diversity trainer for about three decades and the whole point of diversity training is that when you get a bunch of diverse viewpoints, the evidence is consistent that you get better outcomes in the end. And, you know, any, any of you can stand up and say something and the point of it is for one of us to say, oh, I hadn't thought of that angle. Or maybe somebody comes to us and says, you know, I, I was, I actually have expertise in this area and have you looked at this resource or that resource? You know, I'm going to listen to the professionals, but there's also people in the community that, you know, have expertise, have an understanding of the history of, of our town and our borough and I'm not going to ignore them. And I think it's our obligation as representatives in a representative democracy to actually listen to the people who elected us. You know, when Fred and Cindy came to me and I'm well aware that I was appointed to this position, not elected by any of you to fill a vacancy. When Cindy and Fred came to me and asked me if I was interested in the position, one of the reasons why they told me I should be interested is that I'd probably be here during the time of a generational change and that I had the ability to make an impact in that regard. And that was the primary reason why I came on to this and am now standing, you know, for a full term. I want to make sure if we make that generational change for the next 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years, it's done right, that it's done deliberately, that it's done with a thoroughness in the same way that I would treat one of my cases if I was going to trial, that I look at every angle, that I look at the other side's point of view. That's what you led us for and that's what I intend to do and that's why I asked in joints, Cindy, I'm saying, can we just take a breath and slow down this process so that we don't make any unforced errors?
Thanks. And I just prefer if we keep our discussion more to the proposals that are on the table today rather than, there's been some behind the scenes discussion in council, obviously, about these topics and I prefer to focus on our plan going forward.
And I do want to point out that the planning commission's recommendation, base recommendation, and therefore packed into everything we've been talking about, is an affordability set aside as a component of any of this. So from, from get, and I, I've taken to calling it the Narwhal Affordable Residential Notice, the NARB program, that has been a component of this from day zero.
I haven't heard anyone object to that, so I think we definitely want planning commission. Planning commission looking for everybody, maybe hear from our planner why it didn't work for Lower Merion. Let me go to the folks who haven't spoken.
Okay, sure. So I'm hearing a lot I agree with, you know, both from the, from the people who, for those of us who wanted to have sort of a, you know, get this on the agenda for tonight to talk about specific recommendations back to planning commission, of which I won, you know, I feel like this is an important topic that we shouldn't pause on. But, you know, hearing from the various time considerations, I think, you know, I think now we're all pretty much agreed that we're going to get that extra couple of months one way or the other to do this right, that the recodification is going to be, you know, hopefully wrapped up early in the new year and be able to move on. So definitely, I am interested in cottage courts. I'm interested in used housing. I'm interested in cottage sized houses, floor space limited houses. That is a different topic than transportation or development. I, you know, I feel like, yes, we should refer that back to planning commission. Maybe we can get their statement about what a future process or a near future process, looking at smaller housing types throughout the borough would look like. And, but, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily want to put a used house across the street from a, from a train station, you know? So I feel like there's a lot to, a lot to take into account and a lot to like about the current recommendations from planning commission about how we move forward now. And by now, I mean over the next several months on transportation, on TOD ordinance for the 4A district that we're talking about and along Montgomery Avenue. And I disagree that we're talking, it's, it's just that we're talking about two sites. There's met a lot of potential on Montgomery Avenue for redevelopment, you know? I live very close to one of them myself. When my wife and I moved into our house, now we can see Montgomery Avenue from our bedroom and when Andy Says used to run there, the, the red light from Andy Says used to shine into our bedroom, you know? He used to remind us that, that Seinfeld episode. Yeah. And I've, I've always disliked the buildings on Montgomery Avenue.
Like, would, do you see the timing of that grant important? Back to Mike's point, like, we have a grant with Lower Merion, then we want that on Montgomery Avenue.
Yeah, so.
Well, it's a transportation grant.
It's a road safety grant.
It's a road security grant.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, I think I'm agreeing with everybody really that, you know, it's an important topic to keep moving. I would say I'm in favor of, you know, giving back to planning commission eventually the TOD piece for comment, for recommendation, for draw. And also maybe at the same time ask them, how would this fit in with a future examination of smaller scale housing, call it missing middle if you want, you know, throughout, that perpetuates throughout the rest of the borough.
You said eventual, I mean, I guess the question, like, maybe, and I'm confused what's on the table. I mean, I thought that we'd sort of come around to the idea of not giving them a charge yet because we want them to finish the recodification.
Yes, correct.
And I thought that was the recommendation.
Correct.
But now we're getting a sense from President Bush that he actually wants to make a recommendation to them.
I think we have to, we have to let them know what the next step is.
But not like a specific recommendation. Just you're telling them that we want them to continue working on it.
Yeah, my, my proposal is here are things that we want you to think about over the next few months and then come back to us.
Well, I thought we were saying you're, you're finishing the recodification and in the meantime, that gives us time to solicit these questions, have input, a diverse input, right? They're working on the recodification, we want them to concentrate on that. In the meantime, we're going to solicit those diverse opinions, we're going to get our experts lined up and then we'll let them work and then we'll hand them. I thought we were just doing the timeline tonight of like, what can the community expect of this process? What holds us all accountable? We can't go back to a week, days before a meeting, the community has access to documents we're trying to tease through. Like, I saw a contradiction on the parking recommendation that I don't understand. Like, I think we need to set up a clear timeline, like, go work on the recodification, finish what we started, let's all come together, get that webpage up, really get those diverse perspectives together and then thoughtfully charge.
But see, the problem that I have with this.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's some folks who haven't spoken. This, this was my, first of all, this was my concept, so I will respond and then let's let the folks who haven't spoken. I think we have, we generally agree on, on what this process should be, that they're going to finish the recodification and then the next step is they're going to be working on this. But I think we also know in general what we want them to look at, which is the same things they gave us in their letter. I haven't heard anybody object to the things that they sent us in their letter. And in addition, having these experts come in and talk to them, as you proposed, and the missing middle, and the missing middle. And then also working in, you know, planning for a, a public meeting beginning of next year. I think that we have a, a pretty good consensus of how to proceed and I think that's all we need at this point is a general outline of things for them to look at. We're not saying, we know exactly what we want, we're saying, yeah, go ahead and look at the things you were talking about, keep talking about them, announce yourselves, get the expert opinion.
So you're having them do two things at once.
And, and can I speak to that as a member of planning commission previously?
But let me.
Just like, because planning commission allow them to manage their schedule. We would have, when I was on planning commission, and you can speak to this as well, we would often have multiple things and the recodification is handled by, is being largely like the code working and all of that is being handled by a subset of the planning commission that's been reporting back to the larger body. If we go and tell them, we don't want you to work on X, we are not giving them the opportunity to task other folks with continuing to do the research that's being asked about. So then, once we start the conversation, we're starting from, and I don't know if they're going to do that or not, but I certainly know I don't want to take that off the table for them to do because they've given us a set of initial recommendations and maybe they want to involve that and work that and tune that. But the ending of their memo was, hey, let us know if you want us to continue working on that. And for us to, I don't, I disagree with the idea that we should say, we just don't want you to even be able to manage this load if you think that you have folks that want to be able to actually do that research and work on it.
Let me actually send this over to Maggie, who's been working with small group. So do you feel like it is going to be a diffusion of folks if we present planning commission these kind of general thoughts from council at this point?
I don't think so. September, we have nothing else before the planning commission at this time, so we have no active land developments and no other business before planning commission other than the recodification and then any sort of additional zoning that you would ask them to look at related to a TOD. So I think for September, it would be appropriate if this body wanted to make a general policy recommendation this evening that we could then pass on to the planning commission to begin that work, to get the expert opinions, to line that up, to look at the studies, to look at the data, to talk to our MCPC planners and other experts on these topics, to start thinking kind of more globally about what we are looking for. What I want to caution against is advising the planning commission to start diving into any sort of text amendments, drafting of any zoning language. That is premature and that would not be a good use, I think, of their time and their energies. That is something that our MCPC planner should be tasked with and that is something that they will have capacity to start working on once we finish the recodification. So the way that I'm envisioning this is that we get the recodification work done, like I said, that comes before planning commission in October. So September can be planning commission discussing TOD policies, goals, concepts, expert opinion matters. October can be a continuation of that for TOD and then they will also be looking at the full draft of the recodification at that time and providing feedback. So that's really going to be their focus for the October meeting and they can continue the conversation for TOD. And then November will essentially be the, the same. And depending on if the recodification doesn't have any final feedback or iterations or tweaks that the planning commission recommends, they could theoretically then at that point, either November or December, make a recommendation to pass it on to council, then it comes before council to authorize it for advertisement and then adopt at the following meeting. So whether that's.
The recodification.
The recodification. So whether that's November, December or December, January is kind of what our target goals are. It's zoning, so things can happen and things can come up and obviously we want to take our time and make sure that we're vetting everything properly and stress testing the code to ensure that we haven't left any loose ends. That's always the concern with, with zoning is that you need to make sure that it's buttoned up. But there is, I think, a capacity there to have a concurrent discussion about TOD and then really, once planning commission passes the ordinance on to council for consideration, the MCPC planner is no longer actively working on drafting that ordinance language anymore and can then move to beginning drafting any TOD language that we can then start introducing to planning commission to progress that conversation.
That was what I understood of the process.
Yeah.
I think, I think we're okay with that outline as you just explained.
And why wouldn't the town hall be in there for you to?
Probably January, because we won't, we won't actually see any legislation until, it'll take a few months to, to go through planning commission. So I think maybe once planning commission has had their experts come in, their thinking may evolve based on that. So maybe at that point, so, I don't know, early, early, early next year, before, before it comes to us for any, before any language comes to us, I would think.
I'm okay with what, with the way Maggie just described.
I want to let Jean in an hour to speak here because it'll be impatient and then hopefully we can put a bow on this for this time being.
I'm generally okay with that timeline as well. I'm just going to speak to the process. I know I initially was one of the ones who didn't think it was a problem to just let the process move forward and I didn't think that we needed to slow this down, but ultimately I do think this is a better approach and that it's good that we're going to have the opportunity to hear from DVRPC, to hear from Montgomery County Planning Commission, to hear from SEPTA, and it's good that we're going to have that additional time for the community to provide their public input. And I will say, well, we, we have had several public meetings already and one of which was like two hours of public comments at the planning commission meeting. So we are continuing to receive emails and, and I thank everyone for their participation and their engagement and I'm reading every single one of them. And, but I, I do think that we will come up with a stronger product in the end if we, we take the approach that we just talked about. And I just, I do want to like add a caveat to that. In general, like I, we talked about whether or not to look at the TOD part of it rather than the whole like zoning, comprehensive zoning update. And I do strongly believe that we need to focus on the TOD. It's, it's really the lowest hanging fruit that we can, has the biggest impact that has, it's, it's also, planning, planning commission has already taken a look at it, offered their analysis and they're moving forward on it. So I don't think we should kind of shift gears at this point.
I think, I think I would, I think there's enough interest on council that we should ask planning commission to do, to look at the missing middle as well next year, that this should be on the agenda.
I agree. And I, I think they should be phased so that it's not, it's not slowing down what we can, what we can actually take action on.
And just since it's my point, I, I just want to make sure that when we're looking at TOD, we're doing it with an eye towards the rest of it, if that makes sense.
I think we can definitely say.
And that wasn't really addressed in this.
We can definitely tell planning commission that we would also entertain, you know, we're interested in their thoughts about the other districts. We particularly think missing middle housing, you know, would be appropriate in some of those currently existing districts.
I want to echo at what I've been hearing over and over from the community and I've, I've heard you guys say it too, is that how can we do this in a way that makes sure that we're making a difference in affordability and, you know, like, how does that math work? And what does that look like? What are the actual standards that are going to make a dent in affordability?
And it's a, it's a, you know, you had a question for our planner about how, I think it's a good question for the planner about if we permit more market rate apartments, is that going to affect affordability in the borough? Is that going to? So I think that's a good question for the planner to address when they come in.
That, that is just that, what is, no. So you keep saying one missing middle, but I would ask that we include these.
How can people?
How can people build equity?
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm saying that yes, we can have the planner explain that.
Okay, so we have the, missing middle, this, what are the current zoning limitations that restrict the missing middle? That could potentially come out in the recodification?
I don't, the recodification is not going to change.
Maybe not? Okay, so that might be separate.
That would go with, to me, that's the same thing, like, what, why can't we build these right now?
Right, okay.
I think that goes together.
And then the fourth is, would be about equity. How do we, just to your point, like your grandparents were able to buy a row house, how do we allow people to build equity? So I think that needs to be a discrete question or perhaps a subset of that economic housing theories.
I, I think we can totally present these questions to MCPC and have them respond if, I don't know. I think they're the right experts.
Yeah.
Tara, you ready to go?
I don't have a lot to add. I just want to say that the last few weeks have been great in the sense that we've gotten a lot of feedback from the community. A lot of times, there's some change like this that gets proposed in Narwhal and everybody says, how come I didn't know about this? Never told me and so on and so forth. And that's, that's inevitable in a community like this. But I think, you know, we're getting a lot of feedback both tonight and in, you know, dozens of emails we've received from the community in the last, you know, in the last few weeks. And I'm sure we'll hear more as you go forward with public meetings and planning commission meetings. So that's about all we can expect is for people to be heard and, you know, whatever decision that get made or get made, but I, I don't think this group can be accused of not listening to the feedback from the community at this point.
I do want to thank everybody who's spoken tonight or who's emailed us. I know Jean said she's reading everything. So am I, I think pretty much everybody in council is paying attention to the voices that we hear. So thanks again for coming out. Mayor Deutsche, anything you want to add?
I think a lot's been said and, and I'm taking it all in. And I've been on council now eight years and I was, excuse me, I've been sitting at this table for eight years. I've actually been sitting at the table for 10 years because I was on council for two years. The one thing I would, it's a really important topic. I believe in TOD, as everybody said. I, I believe in affordability. I want to be able to retire and sell my little home in Narwhal, which is actually the smallest single family home in the borough. And be able to afford to stay in the community I've served and I love. I've served and I love it. What I have seen over the years and I would caution the people at this table, the person sitting at this table the longest, do not get stuck in analysis paralysis. Do your research, but, but we have at times studied things ad nauseam so that nothing ever actually happens. Please, this is an important topic. It's a, it's a topic that affects our environment. It affects affordability, it affects accessibility, it affects so many different things. And as Michael mentioned, there are limited options for taking advantage of TOD in the borough because we're pretty built out. There's not an awful lot here. The only place to go is a little bit up. So I would ask this council, in the interest of the people of this borough and in the interest of future generations, to not get stuck in analysis paralysis, to not get stuck in constantly adding, oh, in this topic, oh, in this topic, oh, in this topic, and broadening it to a point where nothing happens. That plays into the hands of the NIMBYs, the people who don't want anything to happen, the people who are maybe slightly elitist, who don't want affordable units to come in. This town was, used to be called Hungry Town. It was called Hungry Town for a reason. It was the working class, it was the, it was the lower middle class. It was the people who worked on the main line and now we're creeping up into like gladder. And not that there's anything wrong with it, it's a lovely place, but it doesn't, it doesn't serve the history of who we are and who we should, and who we've always been. And keep the residents of Hungry Town in mind. And you know what? They were your grandparents. They were the people who built and raised their families here and made it such a special place. Do not get caught in analysis paralysis to the point where nothing actually gets done. And I would encourage you to honor the history of this town, to honor the people who made this town special and who continue, who will continue to make this town special and, and make a place for them at the table. And that's it.
Alright. I think we've generally reached consensus here, so I think we can move on to another agenda then. Thanks everyone for the thoughtful conversation.
Do we want to take five?
I would love one.
Alright, alright, we will adjourn for, yeah, five minutes at this point.
We're good.
Okay, I am going to return this meeting to work at 9:19. Let us move on to the next agenda item.
I move to approve the consent agenda items A through C.
Okay, there are seconds for consent agenda, okay. Any discussion of the consent agenda items? Alright, we are voting on consent agenda items A through C. All those in favor? Any opposed? Alright, it is unanimous. Now let's come to our presentation.
I'm going to blind you guys.
Alright.
Oh, wow.
You want to know what? Go sit over there.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Sure. It's going to be, yeah, so if council members want to move to the front row there for the zombie, can look at the pretty pictures and then answer, ask questions after the presentation is over. Well, wherever you can see from, just move to somewhere more accessible.
I should have figured this out before we were convened.
I know.
Computer, it keeps switching. Sorry guys, technical difficulties.
Have you used the projector before?
We, no, we, yeah, we tested everything and it worked earlier. Because it should be connected right to the computer.
Is the connection good? Isn't the chair covering the work?
We're waiting for your- Oh wait, that's James' thing.
No, I'm going to grab another soda, follow me.
Yes, patronized chip, chip dessert.
Are you getting a soda? Exactly, yeah.
Thank you, save him your money.
No, 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 I have $5 worth of quarters.
Well, I hope we're expecting this to be a five.
It takes parts in your life.
It does, yeah. The daisies? Yes, thank you.
Technical difficulties.
You're going to sit here and watch?
Yeah.
Oh yeah, it's a really good bear there.
We're going to go ahead and get started now. Thank you for patience. One of the first things that I will recommend for our capital plan is to invest in updated dwellings. Well, wait, back. Well, yay. This is actually a room. Alright, so we're here tonight to talk about the capital improvement plan. I'm glad to see everyone's enjoying our new vending machine also. Mr. Chip is providing well for us tonight. So the capital improvement plan, this is something that shouldn't be news to you. This was really developed in full last year, so I'm just carrying the torch forward and updating it from what we had. So we can just go ahead and dive right in. So the capital improvement plan has a couple main purposes. This is our document, it is a planning document that we've utilized in order to identify, plan for, and articulate the prioritization of various things that qualify as capital projects. So we have our full list of projects and then they all get ranked. So this helps us to identify what's going to be the most important to the community. Not all capital projects are created equal. It gives us the management, again, to minimize this variability. So things come up during the year. This is a planning document that really helps us kind of solidify where we want to go so that we have a path forward. It provides us with the financial effects on future projects. Again, this is going to say if we want to do X number of projects, it will cost X amount of money and that helps us then to make smart choices about our budgeting and about our tax dollars. It's also helpful in the sense that we can utilize this to secure funding, grant funding, project funding, state and federal funding. We can say, listen, we have a plan for this. We've already articulated this is going to happen. That really provides us with a good starting point to advocate for ourselves to get additional funding from our sources. One of the key things that we use the capital plan for is to plan ahead. So doing an emergency repair of a sewer main is much more expensive than if we were to proactively maintain and take care of our infrastructure. So what this does is it, it helps us to identify track and update as we go, which avoids the costly repairs and instead focuses on incremental repairs and maintenance. And then overall, it just provides us with a better quality of service for all the things that would be administered in the borough. A couple of things that this does not include, you'll notice these are all the same things that we saw last year, safe for the master parks plan. So the master parks plan was included on the exclusion list last year. That was just because the plan had not yet been completed. It has been completed, all of those projects are now on our capital plan, which you may notice if you look at the total amount of money in our capital plan from last year to this year, it has gone up simply because we have now all of our parks projects on it. But a few things that it doesn't include is the annual road paving program. This is a separate fund. This is our highway aid fund, you get the fuels money. So this is wholly separate and different from capital projects, even though the work that's being done on the roads program is a, would seem to qualify as a capital fund. It is fully separate from a funding and recording standpoint. 201 Seabine Avenue, we still don't necessarily have an idea of where we're going with that. We have lots of different options that we're still pursuing, but absent a clearly articulated path forward at this time, we have opted not to include any specific recommendations in the capital plan for 201 Seabine. Fire equipment is also another separate cash account. That is, we rely on the fire company to provide us with that information as to what we need. That again is also a separate cash account, which is somewhat related to our capital funds, but it is, it is just a separated account. So that's excluded from this. And then the bridge, of course, and I, we talked about this already earlier in the evening, but the bridge is going to be, again, its own, own account, its own funding and out of urban construction. That is all federally funded there. And then also our sewer fund, small scale capital expenses. So a lot of our smaller sewer funds are going to actually just be paid through the sewer fees that we collect. And that was also articulated last year and adjusted last year to account for some of those costs. So a lot of our smaller scale sewer improvements, you'll see, will come out of that. We do have some larger ones that though, that will come out of the capital plan, which is one of the ones that we have prioritized actually for next year. So what actually counts as the criteria, we're articulating this as one type cost of $5,000 or more and an estimated lifespan of more than two years. It is a, it is not a or situation, it is an and situation. So you have to meet both of these criteria in order for that project to be considered a capital project. So where we are in the process, again, all of this should look very familiar to you, but we started working on this as soon as I started, then Matt handed me over the keys. He said, work on the capital plan. And I said, alright. So we added all the master parks plan stuff to it and I've just been working internally with staff, getting caught up to speed on where we are with the administration and implementation of the projects we were, that we were doing this year. And then we started looking at prioritizations for next year. So we updated the whole thing internally with our staff. I came to council, we had small group sessions, got the input from council, updated the master inventory list. And then now we are at the actual presentation of this plan. So what goes then from here towards the budget? So we review the capital plan and then we will, council will vote to adopt it at next month's meeting if, depending on any changes. And then we will be seeking funding requests from all of our other boards and commissions, all of our other partners, so public works, police, admin. We put it all together, drafted everything up and then that would give us our annual budget. So again, the capital plan is a planning document, it is not a funding document. The funding document is the budget. So what we do is that we take the capital plan, we take a look at all of the things that I'm going to show you tonight and then you, council, are the ones to make the decision as to what we actually want to fund. And we will do that in conjunction with identifying all of our other budgetary needs for the year to come up with our total budget that we will adopt by December. This is the evaluation criteria. This is the evaluation criteria that was used. This was developed last year, I believe, Michael, you were instrumental in assisting with this, so we are still using this and I believe we will always continue to use this. This is a great tool, it has a couple of evaluation factors, so cost, savings, health and safety, impact, regulatory compliance. And then we do have another consideration, so we can boost things based on warranted justifications, just to kind of elevate a project in the ranking. So we have three different, not three, we have a couple classifications, so we have three rankings. And then the rankings all go into, into the spreadsheet, which gives us then our prioritization list. So we have low, medium-low, medium, medium-high and high. So the the most, the highest score that any particular project can get is a 25 point and then you can see they go down from there. Of the items that we have in our capital plan for this year, so this includes all of the capital projects that we projected for 2026 through 2030. This does not include items that we are currently working on in 2025. We have 94 items that have ranked in our capital improvements plan. These are all the projects that are as of yet uncompleted and not yet initiated, so 94. This is an increase from last year and again, that's because the parks plan projects made it onto the list this year. Of all of the ones that we've identified, of all of the medium-high and high, we have 30 total items that classify as urgent. So these are things that should not be deferred, that these are critical- um, that these are critical life safety things that we really need to address. Um, we do have a couple of things that rank in the medium-high to high score, but they're contingent upon other things happening, and those are, um, non-urgent items, so we have 10 of those things. They're predominantly building, internal building permits to this building here, uh, which doesn't get triggered unless we actually do some substantial work. So if we were to do a renovation of this building, then those things would get triggered, but until then, um, they're high and that they rank high, but they're not urgent. So this is kind of small, uh, but this is the snapshot of where we are with our five three capital plan. So you can see here, um, and I know it's hard to read, I apologize, it's small, but in the 2025, these are all of our projects that we have going on right now, currently. These are things that we expect, uh, will be completed before the end of this year and are already completed, uh, this year. In 2026, you can see we have a significant number of items that have come up. Everything that's highlighted in green has, uh, potential grant funding opportunities. Anything that's highlighted in the yellow is identified as the non-urgent items. So the timeline for this is informed in part by, uh, regulatory compliance, um, and also just staff input in terms of when things need to happen and when, um, kind of based on phasing, based on, um, inputs and based on feedback that council members have provided. So if we kind of zoom in just a little bit, just to kind of highlight some of the things that we have, um, you know, we have our MS four requirements to do, uh, our, our VMPs, right? So that shows up on the list.
Those are stormwater bump ads, for those who don't speak, uh, planner language.
Sorry, stormwater, best manager practices, goes towards our MS four permit, which is our municipal separate storm sewer permit. It's a DEP requirement, it is, um, that we have, so that is, that is for that purpose. We, um, but we have to do other things, so larger, larger capital, uh, things in this building, such as replacing the elevator, um, we have new police vehicles, uh, we need to do some work with the library, invest fuel, um, and then we have some things from the master parks plan. So most of the projects in the master parks plan do show up as grant fundable. Um, there's a lot of, uh, grant opportunities for parks and open space projects, so we will be very busy over the next couple of years identifying those grant opportunities and seeking to get as much grant funding as we possibly can to, um, to pursue these projects. Uh, the way that I've, I've drafted this in terms of the, the funding, so the number, the total estimated cost at the bottom is the actual total amount of money that we expect these projects to cost. Um, in the funding, which I'll get to in just a couple slides, we do assume that anything that's grant funded would be 50% grant funded, only because most grants have a match requirement. That means that the municipality would have to pay at least half of the cost of whatever that project is. Sometimes the match is a little bit lower, so we have less of an in, input that we would need to make, but it's safe to assume that it's a 50% cost. Um, again, if I can put my Matt West hat on and reiterate again, the CIP is not a funding document, it is a planning document, and I think he drilled that, and I will continue to drill that because it is very true. If you looked at the slide before, it was small print, but it was $1.2 million just to do the projects we've identified for next year alone, not to mention the next four years and then all of the subsequent years. So, that is not to say that if it shows up on the CIP that we will necessarily be, um, funding all of it in the same year. It is a planning document for us to make well-informed decisions about our financial future. So, the way that we look at this then, in terms of how we make those decisions, we take our current capital fund balance, we take any potential transfers from the general fund, plus potential grant funding that we can get, um, and that will inform us then what our budget is that we can work with, and then again, we can make decisions from there. Um, importantly to note, if you do approve this capital project, this does not give us part, us, meaning staff, part blanche to move forward with any of these projects without council approval. We do not take the approval of the capital plan as approval of the projects. The projects themselves will still come before council every time we proceed with them to get authorization to actually administer that particular program, or go for that grant, or whatever the case might be. So council will still have control over this, um, as we go. So for a funding purpose, we have a couple scenarios. Again, this should look familiar to you from last year. Um, so the first scenario is kind of a worst-case scenario. This is the most limited, um, you know, budgetary outlook, uh, where we just take our existing capital fund balance, we don't put any inputs into it, and we see how far that takes us. Again, $1.2 million for next year, folks, uh, doesn't take us very far. Scenario two would be, uh, our existing balance plus a one-time general fund transfer. Uh, scenario three would be capital, and then assuming, uh, an annual general fund transfer. Scenario four would be that, plus then also future grant opportunities. I'm telling you right now, spoiler alert, um, option four is gonna be the most bank card up. That'll get us the furthest in terms of implementing our capital. So I'll just go through these very quickly, I don't need to belabor the point, um, but our operating fund balance, um, as of the end of July is about $1 million. If we don't put any inputs into it, um, and we, we consider we have outstanding capital projects, so this, there's 278,000, this is to administer all of the programs, um, and all of the projects that have been started this year. Uh, so that is going to be assumed to come out. So our ending balance as of December 31st of this year is gonna be about $854,000. We carry that over into 2026, and then we spend $1.2 million out of that $854,000, which is a deficit of $381,000, and then it just goes down. Alright, and then moving on, this is assuming a one-time transfer of $300,000. Uh, again, same thing, we end up in a deficit next year if we actually spend the $1.2 million. I will point out as well, in 2029, we see the $735,000 in, 735,014, shows up again in 2029. That is our Amtrak down payment that we made, that comes back to us when the project is complete. So we're assuming then that we're gonna get this cash infusion in four years' time when the bridge is complete, which does help us out somewhat with our projections, but again, that's four years out. And really, that should just be seen as fun money. I don't know that we should necessarily proceed as though that's not gonna be coming back to us. Um, that will just be a windfall that we can get at that time, um, and we can, we can project better once we get closer and once we have a better sense of what we need to do. Um, that, but that is something to keep in mind as we go forward with our funding scenarios. Same thing again here, um, this is assuming, uh, a $300,000, and I just use that number since that's what we put into the capital fund from general fund for this year. So if we assume a constant $300,000, um, this gets us, uh, in a slightly better position. But really, the, the winner here, um, is to have some grant funding. So again, these grant reimbursements are assuming 50% of the grants, uh, based on the cost of the projects that are grant eligible. And then, you can see though, we, we still end up in a deficit in, in 2027. Again, we have just such, such a large amount of, of projects that we will be adminning next year. So we will need to continue to tweak this, but this is helpful, I think, as we move into the budget season for council to consider, and then we can work on, um, making, uh, and identifying what we like to do then. That assumed, so I will point out, that was assuming all items. Um, I had talked about urgent, non-urgent, so these are just, just for the, for these, these are just the same funding scenarios, but just for the urgent items. So, so that's the one-time infusion, and then if we go to the next, this is the, um, continued infusion, and then if you go to the next, um, is the grant funding opportunity. So it, it does, it does work out a little bit better, um, but it's still not quite enough. So if these are, in fact, all of the projects that we want to administer, we will need to take a look then at our funding sources as we get into the budget. So that, that, uh, annual transfer might need to be revisited if that is something that we want to do in order to increase the funding for our capital plans. Okay, uh, real fast, um, so the master inventory list, like I said, this is a continuous thing. This is, uh, probably one of the very first things that was introduced to me when I started here, and I look at this list on a weekly basis. We add to it, we update it, um, and we continue to, uh, have it exist as a living, living, breathing document. On an annual basis, you'll see the draft capital plan, um, it will come around July and August of the same year, um, and then that gets lumped into our operating budget. So this is a wash, rinse, repeat. Um, hopefully next year I'll just say, "Here's the update to the capital plan," and maybe move on from there. Probably could've done that anyway, but wanted to give it a shot. So that concludes my, my brief update to the capital plan, and happy to take any questions.
Questions from council? Alright, I don't see any at the moment. As you said, this has been a procedure, uh, all council members have met with you to discuss these items, so I think we're all pretty well aware of the state of the projects, and, as you say, an awful lot of these are required by the state or are, you know, damaged sewer main, or things that are necessary repairs, so.
And, and a lot of the things that we're looking at for next year are, are pretty critical infrastructure components that really are not eligible for deferment. Um, so there's, there's things that need to get done, and so we really need to identify and prioritize those.
Thank you, Maggie, for, for the thanks and all this.
My pleasure.
Thanks for your work. I do have a question.
Yeah.
Um, so scenario four, with just the urgent items, it still, you know, ends up in a, you know, by 2027, we run out of funds in the capital fund. Do you, like, do you have a recommendation as to how, whether it's, you know, a general fund transfer, or whether it's something else? Do you have a recommendation for that?
Most likely, um, a general fund transfer. I know, uh, we had talked before about utilizing, um, so there, we have our projections for EIT, and then anything over the projections would, would go funnel into the capital plan. Um, so depending on the outcome of our total EIT collections for the year, that number could go up. Um, the other thing too is that we just reopened our pliget account, which is a higher interest earning account. Um, and so what we can do is, anything that's not needed for, um, immediate expenditures, we can just pocket a lot of money, uh, from the capital fund into this pliget fund, and, and then just have our capital operating account have enough cash in it to pay for the expenditures that we anticipate. Um, and we can, we can make transfers, um, monthly, so we can kind of keep monitoring that. That would give us, you know, an extra couple thousand dollars, not necessarily substantial enough to cover a $151,000 deficit, um, but, you know, every, every little bit goes a long way. Um, as Mr. Weissboard mentioned, Fonghi is up and running as well, so we can also start branching out, um, if there's opportunities for additional fundraising, um, and then again, just continuous, uh, grants, um, pursuit of grants and, and, and other, other sources. But, um, if we wanna take a look at it, then, you know, through the budgeting process, we can certainly explore what that would look like if we were to increase the, the capital, I'm sorry, the general fund transfers into the capital.
Okay. Thank you again for your tremendous work on this.
Yeah, too.
Absolutely. Um, there is a draft report that will go along with this. We can make that available on the website starting tomorrow, um, so that'll be available for the public to review as well as this presentation. Um, and then the expectation is if there's any additional comment from council, if everything looks good, then we'll go ahead and have this up for adoption in September, and then we roll right into budget season.
Alright, thanks, Maggie.
Okay.
We can have, take our seats.
Okay.
Take your table. Want me to close this?
Definitely not. Sorry, sorry, then. Like, four inches higher.
Okay. No, no, we're on the agenda here. Okay. Uh, let's move on to consideration item 11A. I'll take a motion.
I want to make a motion to strike.
You, you can't make a motion, but we'll, 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 we'll take it. We'll, we'll, uh, we'll allow you to speak in a minute. Let's get a motion.
Okay, I'm going to adopt ordinance, uh, 10:65, if that makes a fair grade dedication.
Uh, right, is there a second? Okay, so, uh, Mr. Lyons has stayed here through the meeting and wishes to, to say some more, so, uh, go ahead.
I just want to make a motion to strike the last sentence of paragraph three for the argument I made before, and/or alternatively, I ask you to defer, uh, a vote on section three until I have adequate time to, uh, respond to the other comments made tonight.
Okay, so, um, okay, well, you, you can't make the motion. They have to come from us, but we can discuss this. You can ask us, you can ask us to strike it, which we will take.
I respectfully request the council.
Duly noted, so, um, uh, so, Mr. Walker, what would be the effect of striking that sentence?
Well, it would make no substantive change on this ordinance. It was added purely to, uh, make sure there's no future confusion as to what this ordinance would do, uh, particularly with the issues, uh, again, that have been apparent, with the issue with the wall that came after this discussion, as to ownership. And, uh, maybe there's a claim that Hanson Court doesn't own it, or the individual owners don't own it, or do. Certainly the borough does not own these facilities listed, including the walls, the, the lights, and we can address the light posts in the front, but there are more lights along the walls into the community, the stormwater facilities, um, which I believe includes a significant basin, uh, where other public improvements that service the, um, Hanson Court community. The borough has agreed to maintain the, the light posts. Um, I don't think this is impacted by this ordinance one way or another. We pay for the electricity for those light posts. Well, if they break, we fix the lights. Um, and again, this, that, this ordinance has nothing to do with that. Um, there was a question as to the sewer lines. Does it impact any of the sewer lines? If it's owned by the borough, and the borough, if it's the sewer, we replace the sewer. If it's a lateral connection, it's the homeowner's responsible for, the homeowner's gonna be responsible for it. So it, it certainly does not impact the purpose of this ordinance, which, which is to accept dedication of the roads, but the intent is to put this language in here, so for 10 years from now, if the storm facilities break and someone says, "Hey, borough, it's cost $250,000 to fix our stormwater facility, look at this ordinance from 2005, you took ownership of it." The future council and future solicitor can take the ordinance and say, "No, look, it says right here, that's not what we've done." Uh, and that is, that's why it's included in here, it's really just the specification, a limitation to, to just the road.
I mean, do, do you think that a stormwater improvement could be considered a public road improvement located under Hanson Court? Cause I mean, that kind of...
I think that they could say that there are, uh, pieces of the facility that drains into the basin that run under the road, and that's all the same facility.
So, so why are the sewers, which are also under the road, different than the stormwaters?
We already own, we already own the sewers.
Oh, so that, that's stated elsewhere, or that's...
No, because that isn't, there's no need to exclude that. That's something that the borough does.
We already own it.
We own the sewer, the main sewer lines.
Even before, even before we owned the road.
Correct. Uh, I presume, um, but then again, there are lateral lines that run from each of the properties, and usually the homeowner's responsible for the lateral lines.
That's true for me. Yeah, that's true for me.
And that's, that's the way it is throughout the entire borough.
But if there's, but there's, like, either one, just some regular street in, in Norbert, the, the stormwater ones are there, the borough owns that, right?
The, the, the borough would probably be maintaining the, the grates as part of the road, maybe it maintains the grates as part of this road as well, this end of the road.
So really, all you're referring to when you say stormwater is if there's a basin underneath?
Or a basin along the side with, uh, drainage, uh, pipes going to that basin.
Right, but I'm just trying to establish if there's another area in Norbert that has that stormwater infrastructure, the borough owns that and maintains that or not?
No, the borough would not be owning any private stormwater facilities. We maintain the stormwater facilities on our property, usually. Usually the property owners would be responsible for the facilities that are on their property. If there was a situation like this today, we would have required at the time of land development approval that homeowners association be created and that the association be responsible for any of these shared facilities or common areas. And again, the stormwater facility that services just that community would be a common facility. That wasn't done. The borough doesn't own that property. There are no individual property owners as well. Again, I can anticipate the issue arising in the future and I just want to be careful with this. And again, that issue is present on those other two roads, which is why it's particularly important to include that into this particular paragraph.
How much of a pain is it if we strike this part of the, if we strike this road from the resolution?
I don't believe it would be a substantive change to make this ordinance go, need to go through the legal legal process of having to be re-advertized. I am confident that eventually it'll be used against the borough, that the borough also should be paying for and maintaining and therefore legally responsible and liable for other facilities that we don't believe at this point that we own or are responsible for.
No, I mean, my proposition would be that we just don't accept Hanson Court. We accept Foxhawley and we accept Narwin Lane and we say, we're not going to accept Hanson Court at this time. And if we don't resolve this, then we stop plowing Hanson Court. That would be my resolution, is if we don't resolve this by the end of the year, we just stop plowing Hanson Court and treat it as a private road.
I do believe that that would be a material change in the ordinance because you'd be changing the subject of not including Hanson Court within.
We would be striking a portion of the legislation.
I think that would be a substantive change. And again, we are under a timeline for making sure this is approved and where to get our ordinance and our resolutions to bend on, so we can get our liquid fuel reimbursement. And again, that's the difference between the roads and the other facilities, is that we get money back for the work that we do for the roads, but not for anything.
Okay. So Mr. Lyons, you hear our perspective, that there are improvements that include this particular stormwater bump out, the lights that are not on the edge of the property and the wall. And Narver Borough does not want to own those. We don't believe we do. We don't want to own those.
That's not the issue here. No one's making a claim for that. In the 33 years I've been a resident, I've never made a claim for that. Our only claim has been for the whites. And I think to use this ordinance as a prophylactic measure for something that may be argued in the future is improper and it's irrelevant to the actual road. Our road has always been blacktopped and paved. Our road has always been play up. There's never been an issue with that. And now, just because something may happen in the future, I think that's just improper and going beyond your power. And the issue for this ordinance, the ordinance was specifically limited to roadway, but Foxhole, with Narwin, it should be the same for Hanson Court. That might only be.
Could we include a clause that says lights apart from the lights at the entrance of Narwin Lane? Or at the entrance of Hanson Court? Because those are the ones that we agreed to maintain. We never agreed to maintain the others.
Well, maintaining, maintenance and ownership to certain things.
Do we actually own them or do we just maintain them?
They just maintain. We do own the electric caps. There was conversations about us taking over ownership of the electric caps. We did. We did repair them. But the ownership of the structure themselves, there's nothing, I don't recall cats or taking acceptance dedication at any time.
Has Attorney Walker?
Well, hold on. Do we just want to add this language to the other streets? I mean, would that satisfy if we said further this acceptance does not include any whatever, whatever on the other streets?
That'd be fine as well.
I mean, because presumably if we already own them, it won't change the ownership of them, right? Like, I mean, it's just, right? Because I believe, for instance, Foxhawley has lights, but as far as I know, those are borough owned. Those have always been maintained by the borough. They were replaced under the borough's LED scheme. And I believe they were like, the reason that this came up is because we did an inventory of what lights Pico thought we owned and those were not included.
This ordinance, if we own something, we are not able to then disclaim ownership of what we already own. And if we already own it, it really would do nothing.
So if we include the same language, if we just add the same language for the other two streets, that won't, in your opinion?
That will not impact what this ordinance does to the other two streets, this ordinance. It's really just limited to the roads. It could be added to the other two streets without any substantive changes.
Would that satisfy, Mr. Lyons?
I don't live on Narwin. I don't live on Foxhole. I'm not the right person to ask for that. I just think if this ordinance was geared for road surface, it'd be limited to road surface and not have other things in there that prophylactically may address something that comes down the road 10, 20, 30 years from now. That's all. I think less is more, personally.
So it would not satisfy?
No, but I hope you know that we're looking out for future generations of council who's going to say, hey, why didn't you think about this?
I understand. I mean, when this came up with the new lighting project five years ago, I was the one that came and argued this. So I'm familiar with it. Our only concern was the lights. I have no gripe about the wall. I don't have a storm inlet on my property. There is one at the entrance to Hanson Court and then down in the cold attack area. But that's not the issue. All I'm saying is stay focused, stay focused.
So if we strike the word lights, if we strike the word lights on this?
Strike this. I just want to clarify what I'm hearing. At first you said you didn't like it because you weren't being treated fairly, like, why is it in with us and it's not with the others? Then they agreed to do it across the board and now you still have a problem. You're switching your argument.
No, I meant that in the sense it shouldn't apply to us because it applies only to the roads like it is in sections one and sections two. It applies only to the roads. And I think that was the intent in this whole ordinance. And I think it's, I think it's improper to expand the ordinance when the intent is only to aim for the road surface.
But you understand, the real intent of this is that we're paving these streets anyway and we'd like to collect the money from the state to help us pay for that. That's why this is being done.
Correct.
That's so, I mean, that's the equity problem right now. We're paying for your streets and not collecting the money.
I understand that. You're collecting our tax money, but you're not collecting, you're not getting the money from the state. But what's the light, the lights have to do with that? What's the wall have to do with that? 90% of the wall is on Montgomery Avenue anyway. It's not only Hanson Court.
What problem do you have with the borough protecting itself?
I don't have any problem if they want to do it by another separate ordinance. This ordinance is supposed to be focused solely for the roads.
But it's also clarified. It's serving dual purposes. It's clarifying and it's...
Let's, thank you for your thoughts. I'm going to hear from Council Jim.
Would it make a, would it say the same thing if we changed the wording to say, this ordinance only applies to the surface of the road? You know, it is not intended to...
Except anything else.
Other than the surface of the road and, you know, not even mentioning walls, lights, stormwater. It seems like that would be clear both ways.
Yeah, that would preclude any future argument.
I disagree that it precludes a future argument. The intent of this language was specifically because this community has a history of asserting that the borough owns property that it does not own, not confident that that argument would be raised in the future when those facilities or those improvements start to fail. And that they will point to this ordinance to say, you're responsible for it. And I wanted to specifically address that for this borough's protection in the future. That's the only reason. You're right. That doesn't have any, that language doesn't have anything to do about the roads. It does just highlight, it highlights that this is just about the roads and not these other effects. So that purely is the reason that language is there. I believe even the evidence of what's happening today shows why that language should be taken.
I think we could, and maybe I'm crazy, but maybe, and recognizing that whereas clauses don't have binding effect, but trying to figure out whether this language couldn't be moved into a different section to say, you know, by our acceptance of the roads, the borough is not accepting any other...
It could be anywhere.
As a general proposition, you know, it could be section seven or eight or nine or wherever that applies to all of these properties across the way and making clear that, and I would change the language slightly by saying, by accepting ownership of the roads, nothing in here is meant to either expressly or impliedly suggest that we are accepting ownership of any other materials, building, whatever you want, whatever the exact language is, including but not limited to these other things. To me, that makes it clear we're only accepting roads. It's across the board. It should be probably in every ordinance, like if you, if you were able to take back Shirley Circle, which you can't because we don't qualify. But if we did, you know, you would want to use that same language for Shirley Circle or any other of these entities that would apply. Why not just make an inherent part of the statute as a whole that applies to all?
There would be no problem with that. That would be simply a, I think, a formatting issue, not substantive change. And because the content is just clarification of what the rest of the ordinance says, it would not be a substantive change.
All right. Does that satisfy your concern?
Agreed.
Can I ask though?
I think that's a good idea.
Let's see, if John agrees that this is still protected.
John, I'm sorry, do you also think that it's worthwhile to include all these other roads, then, all those other roads?
Well, this would be...
No, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, so it's a general...
So can you?
Essentially, I think the tool is to have the language that says that this can't be used against the borough at a later time for those items, whether it's just this road or all three roads. As long as it's in the ordinance, I think that'd be satisfactory.
Okay. So can we phrase this as an amendment so that it can be in a sufficiently clear fashion?
Do you want me to make the motion?
Yeah, think about it for a second. Thanks to councilmembers for bearing with us here.
Helps to have one lawyer on council.
Acceptance of this ordinance in no way implies Narver Borough accepts anything other than the road surface. Yeah, give me, give me a second.
Well, I would like, I mean, I would like to specify the items.
Yeah, yeah.
The road bed, I mean...
No, he's saying, he wants to say what it doesn't include.
Yeah, I know, but we may, we may actually be acquiring things that are slightly more than the road surface. I mean, it might be the road bed. I don't know what, but yeah, yeah. I think in general, I think that is...
The real problem is we never should have been maintaining it.
Absolutely. I'm doing this right now. It's so intense.
The real problem is we should have maintained this years ago. I don't think anybody realized that we had never taken possession of these roads. I think that's, this was an oversight many years ago and it was never done. These were not intended to be private roads. They were always intended to be absorbed. I mean, Jeff, that's your understanding too, right? Is this thing on the way? Is it on? The kerfuffle? Okay. All right. Mostly comfortable. I hope you have it on. I'm surprised. I've only got one hour of time to do that. Half the people in the room, so, all the people, everybody.
Well, the potential of the flood, the big flood, the ocean. No.
Where are you?
If there were a huge number of people who were forced to... I figure if I'm not going to limit the time to two minutes, I'm not going to... Okay, go ahead.
So I move to amend the ordinance to add a provision that says, acceptance of the items set forth here and shall not be construed to constitute acceptance expressly or by implication of any other structural improvement adjacent to the road, including but not limited to any walls, light posts, or stormwater facilities.
All right.
Does that work for you?
Okay, does anybody have a problem with this amendment?
Somebody needs a second line.
Okay, any, are there any concerns with this amendment? All right, the amendment is accepted. I would also suggest that someone suggest we strike the last sentence of section three.
Oh, sorry, that should have been part of the motion, to strike that language.
Okay, you want to amend your motion?
Yeah, sorry. I'd like to amend my motion to strike the last line of section three and replace it with the language as a separate provision applicable to all of the roads that we are accepting.
Okay.
In the language I just read.
All right, the senator is nodding. It's been seconded. Any further concerns with this? All right, that amendment is accepted. Any further discussion on this ordinance? I'm ready to vote on the ordinance. Okay, let's vote on ordinance 1063, acceptance of roadway dedication. All those in favor? Okay, it is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you for your valuable time and service. That's really good of you.
All right, let's move on to related item 11B.
Have a good night.
Resolution, all these issues.
Okay, I move to a resolution 2025-16, verifying maintenance of Foxhole, Narwin, Hanson Court, and Borough.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, this is just telling the state that we have been, the borough has been maintaining these roads. It's a necessary part of us getting ownership of the roads, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any further discussion of this? Okay, let's vote on resolution 2025-16. All those in favor? Voting, voting, voting. Okay, it is voting. All right.
Oh, I thought I got it right.
Mr. President, I will just say briefly, we'll need four signatures on the resolutions. So I'll need four councilmembers too. So we'll need Fred and Cindy and then two others.
All right.
And then we'll notarize them tomorrow.
That's the, that's the pen dot form.
Okay.
I will leave Chair of Infrastructure at me.
There we go.
I think if anyone who votes for it, and I'm presuming that it just shows that there's a majority.
Yep. Losing unanimous votes, so anybody who wishes to... All right, Chair of Infrastructure, Public Council, safe. Good suggestion. Let's move on to 11C.
I move that Borough Council approve resolution 2025-17, sale of Borough vehicle.
Second.
Okay. What are we selling, Maggie?
We are selling Chief String's old Crown Victoria to 2011 Crown Victoria. This is the one that we're replacing. This is the one that we are replacing with the new Mustang Mach-E EV vehicle.
Okay. Any further discussions of getting rid of the 2011 vehicle? 2011, all right. All those in favor? Okay, it is unanimous. 11D.
I believefully, I move to approve resolution 2025-18, approval of construction payments from Yamp Shack Bridge.
Who would like to second this? I'm sure everybody would.
I'll second.
Is it not? That's the most recent, I'm on the agenda, it's on the borough's site.
It says D.
Yes, that was 11D that we're on.
2025-17.
Okay. Maggie, you want to? Remind us.
Mine says authorization for Borough manager or managers designate to issue payments. Specifically.
I'm just looking at the consideration, what's listed on it. Yeah, we're looking at the top, so it's possible the actual resolution says.
Okay, it's not important to state it as it's listed in the...
Okay, it's not formed to state it as it's listed in the motion sheet? If it's not, it's not, okay.
John, is there any problems we...
I mean, the agenda is one thing, the motions are... So if you want to make the motion, you should make the motion.
Okay, so let's withdraw the motion.
Okay. I'd like to move that Borough Council approve Resolution 2025-18 to authorize authorization for the Borough manager or Borough manager's designate to issue payments reimbursed by the Commonwealth of Narberth Avenue Bridge Project.
Okay.
Second.
You did not hold that on you?
Oh.
So... This has to do with the fact that the, now that we're in the construction phase, it's 100% federally funded. The way that we pay for this is that there is a, the PennDOT online portal is called ECMS. Essentially, what happens is that the contractor, Roadcom, and our construction management firm, TPD, will be submitting their invoices through this online ECMS system. Those invoices get reviewed and approved by all project partners, including us. Then that money is sent to us by PennDOT, and we have 10 calendar days to pay those bills then to Roadcom and TPD. So this doesn't align with our bills list. We will be getting billed twice monthly. So in order to not jeopardize our federal funding by missing a payment deadline...
Let's not do that.
This, this is just a way that we can ensure that I'm authorized to pay them on an off schedule from our bills list essentially, because I need to be paying them in a timely manner in accordance with their invoicing through this online portal system.
All right, more votes. Any discussion? All right, let's vote on Resolution 2025-18. All those in favor? It is unanimous. 11E.
I guess this is your opinion. Okay, I move that Borough Council authorize this public notice and advertisement of Ordinance 1066, amending Chapter 49 Human Relations of the Narberth Borough. Second.
All right, we've already had an extensive discussion of the changes to the Human Relations Amendment, changes to Chapter 49. Are there any other questions from council?
Basically adopting what you agree to.
All right, let's vote on Ordinance 1066, Amendment to Chapter 49 of Human Relations. All those in favor? Okay, it is unanimous. We are going to pass on 11F and 11G. Those will be coming up hopefully next month. And let's move to 11H.
Jim?
No. I have a motion sheet.
It's on page 162.
All right, that's important.
Is this about TASA program?
Yeah, this is the TASA.
Okay, I move that Borough Council authorize the Borough manager with support from Panoni to submit an application for the 2025 TASA program to replace flashing school lights and provide pedestrian improvements at intersections around St. Margaret's School and Marion Elementary.
Is there, okay. So are these...
Okay, briefly, since it's 1020. Long story short, TASA is a transportation alternative set aside program. It's federal money administered by the state for pedestrian and bicycle improvements predominantly. They have key focus areas that change on a yearly basis. This year, they're focusing a lot on the safe routes to school. So this is a project that we have in our capital plan to replace the flashing school signs. This is a safe school, safe routes to school related project. And the, the plan here is not only to replace the flashing school signs, which is an identified capital project, but also to boost the pedestrian amenities, to add ADA curb ramps and crosswalks at multiple locations, which is in the diagram that you have. This, this essentially increases kind of the applicability of the project towards this program and also provides us with a great opportunity to provide improved pedestrian amenities to our community. The beauty of this program is that the construction costs are 100% funded by the program. The only cost that the Borough would incur would be related to the engineering services and then any staff time for the application materials. The application is due September 5th. It's a preliminary application. The final application is due at the end of October. Panoni will provide some assistance in drafting the application materials, but the bulk of the engineering services won't be until next year. So by authorizing application for this program, we are committing to a nominal sum of money to pay our engineer now for this, which can be absorbed in our existing budget for engineering services. And then as we get into the budget season, we would just budget for engineering services for next year for administration of this program. We won't find out, though, until the spring if we get the funding approved. So if we get the funding approved, then we will proceed with the project and therefore the engineering case.
Public health and safety approved this application as well unanimously.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I'm interested in finding information. So Marion Elementary is a little weird in the sense that it's on the edge of the Borough. Are there signs that are on the lower Marion side that they're going to be improving or that they haven't signed up for this program at all?
Yeah, we haven't approached them about this. And the, the project as it's designed would be... Well, this was raised to me earlier. We will double check that the improvements that we're proposing are all in fact in Borough property.
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to do it.
There were some on the south side of Rockland.
That's still Borough right away, though, isn't it?
Probably.
I don't know who owns Rockland, by the way.
Before we submit, we'll make sure.
We'll, we'll double check that everything is...
Well, yeah, you just, one point is you wouldn't want to have it disallowed. But the other point is that it's, isn't it going to be a little weird if we fix ours, but then like half a block away, they haven't fixed theirs?
They can fix theirs on their own dime.
I know, but it's the spirit of cooperation.
We'll double check everything. It also isn't unheard of to have a multi municipal application, and in fact, it somewhat strengthens it. So depending on how the reviewers score any application, it could actually be seen as a positive. So if that's the case, if it is on the lower Marion side, then I'll call Brandon tomorrow and we'll get him on board.
Well, some of them must be, like around the front of the school. Because the Narberth ends at Rockland.
Right.
For the lights?
Yeah, there are some.
The lights are ours.
The lights were, the lights on the south side were installed when, to, once they went shut down. So where they existed, school shut down in the mid 80s. The Borough sold it.
No, I'm saying there must be other lights on the lower Marion.
We're talking about just the lights on Rockland and...
Okay.
It's just on, yeah, just on Rockland.
Yeah, it's fine, whatever. It's not worth worrying about it.
I mean, but if it does strike, oh, okay.
It's not...
Might be worth reaching out to them to say, "Hey, do you want to, if I have to get lights on?"
We'll double check everything. And as part of our grant application, we would be reaching out to the Marion School District anyway for a letter of support, is it in fact, a letter of support from St. Margaret's. So we have a game plan of who to reach out to. And if we need to get Laura Marion on board, then we'll do that as well.
I don't mean to make too big a deal, but I just live right there, so I, you know, I know that that's like on the border.
Yeah, no, it's, we'll double check it.
Okay. Any other thoughts? All right, let's vote to approve the TASA program application. All those in favor? All right, it is unanimous. Formation items are in the packet. Do we have any urgent updates that we haven't heard, Maggie?
No, I provided it as part of our, the manager's report.
Uh, committee reports, please keep them brief. Finance Administration?
We have no discussion topics active.
Okay, infrastructure?
Pass.[1672.34]